I'm going to go ahead and call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order is Thursday, June 24th, 2021 is approximately 6:10. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted by a remote to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted or remote participation. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and briefly move through our agenda. I'll start off with introductions and pass it off to the town manager, Michael Dutton. Before I do that, I just wanted to thank every member of the town council that's here this evening to what I believe to be our first town council retreat. And the purpose of the retreat tonight is really to facilitate an open dialogue and discussion between all the members of the town council and bring in constituents, really their ideas and problems and issues in front of the town manager and talk about how we incorporate those into goal setting for the town and the town manager, how that incorporates into our town budget. And certainly so that we can have this discussion openly on all the different priorities. And I hope that this will be become an annual event and we get the timing right and where we can have discussions about goal setting and make sure that those goals are appropriately budgeted in the budget cycle so that our town manager is successful in really facilitating and getting those goals accomplished on behalf of the town. So I'm going to turn it over to the town manager for a brief introduction of our facilitator.
All right. No, thanks, Matt. I think as Matt said, hopefully this is something that will be really productive moving forward. But for this first one, I'll turn my phone off in a minute. But for this first one especially, I think it was really important to get somebody who has been part of certainly this form of government and has a really good breadth of knowledge, working with various counselors, various boards of selectmen, various department heads and employees throughout a pretty illustrious career. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff Nutting, who can introduce himself and then sort of explain what role he's going to play as sort of facilitating the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank all of you for having me. I'm honored to be here this evening. And I want to first thank you for your service to your community. I'm the only one that probably do that for you. But so over my 45 years, few and few of people want to participate in what I consider the most important level of government for most people's lives. The federal government doesn't put an ambulance at your front door, educate your kid, and do all the things that you folks in this community do. And so pat yourself on the back because it's a tough job and it's gotten tougher every year for 40 plus years. But just by way of introductions for folks that might be on Zoom, I became involved in local government 45 years ago, chaired a finance committee, a select board, they called them selectmen back then, school committee, and lots of other local committees and commissions. I spent most of the eighties doing interim management where I traveled from community to community and fill in for five, six, eight months depending what it was. I started doing consulting in the eighties, including these kind of workshops, done over 100 consulting gigs in my career. And then I spent most of the nineties as a town administrator in Stone in Massachusetts. And from 2001 till 2019 in Franklin, Massachusetts, which has a very similar form of government, a council manager form of government. I believe it's the best form of government in the Commonwealth, having spent 25 years in the town meeting form of government because you have the ability to move and make decisions and not wait once a year. So congratulations on adopting that. So I tell you all this because I come with a broad perspective, having been elected and understanding the political pressures, sat in the sky seat and worked and served dozen, probably 100 different elected officials, and have been doing this kind of workshops for 30 years. And so all that means is I can bring some perspective. I'm not here to tell you how to run your community, what's in your own best interest. That's what you're elected to do as the board of directors of your community, but might offer suggestions, an idea, or a comment as we go through this evening. No vote should be taken, but if there's consensus to move something to a future agenda, that would be up to the council and the folks to process that however you may wish to do that. So any questions on any of that so far? Great. Well, great to be back. I was here 10 years ago or so, time flies, with the first council. And always great to return. So thank you. How will the event this evening go? I don't know. I guess the real question is what motivated it?
I guess I'll start.
Okay.
So certainly for me, I saw, you know, a town manager that's in a difficult position. Where goal setting looks different from many of the counselors. We all have sort of our own agendas that we're pushing, things that we want to see. And you're, you know, the way it works now is sort of compiling that in a subcommittee and then it's rifling its way up. And, you know, not participating in the subcommittee, I felt like I was short-changed. You know, where does my voice get lost? And the issues that I have and want to see the town manager accomplish over the next year. So let's say it gets to subcommittee, and for me, it's really pushing and getting the fire station to a vote. And maybe that became not a priority for the subcommittee. And now it's now a part of the town manager's goals. And there's funding for that. But when you look at some of the goals that do get set, you know, where is the funding? So one of the things that I had mentioned was cybersecurity, really tightening up the data that we own on citizens in this town so that we don't have a breach and expose our own citizens. But I also understand that that's a very costly endeavor. So when I was starting to write out the goals, I kind of thought about, well, how is the town manager even going to accomplish this? I mean, this could require $300,000. It could require an IT consultant. I don't really know. And then it started dawning on me that, you know, I don't really know what some of the other councils' priorities are. What is it? Is it street improvements? Is it lighting, LED lighting? Is it green initiatives? I don't really know. But understanding that there can only be so many things listed that we're actually going to accomplish. So I wanted to find an informal way, given the parameters of the law, getting us in a room and just having an open discussion about, you know, what are the things that we want to do as a town? And then how do we incorporate those into goals for the town manager? And then how do we make sure that they're funded properly? So at the end of the year, we're saying, well, you didn't do X.
Okay.
Well, okay, well, I couldn't because there was no money there. There was no source of funding. And just trying to get a better handle on that. And so for me, that was sort of the baby step, but also thought that just us collectively getting together in an informal way was a nice way of just having conversations about where we see things headed in the next year.
So the council doesn't annually set goals or in a formal process?
I would say it is a formal process, but it's done sort of compiling your goals and it goes to a subcommittee. And it's really tied to try to do goal setting for the town manager. But I also think that collectively, what are our goals? You know, because some of those things fall off the wayside because again, they can't all be on the town manager's list. That's my two cents.
Anybody have anything that deviates a lot from that?
I mean, I might build on that a little bit. I think as a new member of the council, one of the first things I was trying to do is figure out really what matters. Like, what are we focusing on? What's important? And I actually, I think to the point earlier, it's actually, it's pretty hard to find that out. Like, what are the top three things that we absolutely have to do? And so in addition to us getting aligned, I think it's a good way for us to also help the community understand, you know, what matters. Because I could imagine if we're struggling to figure that out and they're, you know, a few degrees removed, it's probably even harder. So I think, you know, just the communication part of it is critical.
Okay. So what I usually, because it was hard to get everybody together, usually I would have you all fill out that form that you got emailed when I work with groups because people run, you run for office as all individuals. People have ideas, what they'd like to accomplish, why they want to get involved. You get elected, you get sworn in, you get a seat and assigned. Okay, you're all set?
Figure it out.
Okay. And, well,
You get a sign.
Okay. And boards don't sit down and say, okay, what are the three most important things we're supposed to do as a board of directors? And whether you're on a school board, or a council, or not-for-profit, or anything, think about, okay, what are we here trying to accomplish? Well, if you break it down, it's pretty simple. Hire the person that's going to work for you. Observe that person, you know, communicate with that person, figure out how that relationship's going to work. Evaluate that person. Number two, set policy and strategic direction. Where you're going as a community and how you're going to get there. And that has to be consensus of the elected officials. So you run as a board individually, you might have individual goals, but how does that fit in to the broader scheme of what the council, because now you're on a team. And whether there's legitimate disagreement, that's fine. But the team ought to decide where the team's going. And look at that every year and say, okay, we accomplished this. We didn't like that. That fell off the way and two more new ones came. So if you can do this on an annual basis, because when new people onboard, you're lost. And you said, I don't know what, you know, I want to serve, I want to help the community, but what does that mean? So and the last thing is to solve problems that no one else can solve, either legally or the fact that you're leaders of the community. But it implies using the chain of command, you know, because when are you legally a counselor? When you sit at a meeting that's called to order by law. Now, you're a counselor 24/7, that you can't escape that. But where is your authority? Your authority is when you're at a meeting. And a lot of people don't know that. So they're down in the town hall, they're down in the police station, you know, what's going on? Or maybe they're not. But people need to understand their role is, you know, in a setting that's established by law. And that doesn't mean you're not always schmoozing and politicking and listening to people. That's just part of the job. But understanding when you can actually make decisions on behalf of the community as a group, unless you're assigned by the group to do something. So I think that if you can begin a process of setting community goals that then trickle down to the manager's goals, and you can't have 42 of them. And if you can align that ultimately, maybe in the fall, before you start the budget process, because we want to do X, Y, and Z. Well, in July, it's a little late. If it costs money to do something to try to, yeah, if it's five grand, who cares? You'll figure it out. But the big stuff has to be sequenced. So that's kind of just a real quick broad overview of why it's good to do this every year. And it's good to sit down in a formal setting and just say hi to people and get to know people a little better. Because, you know, the open meeting law is a mixed blessing, in my view. It stymies the relationship part of being on a team. You know, if you're a not-for-profit board or, you know, you get to schmooze and talk and you can't do that, you know, or it gets really tricky and then you get accused of breaking the law. And so you have to be really careful with the open meeting law. And the other thing is, how do you guys deal with conflict? Because it's inherent in this job. You're not always going to agree. That's why there's a lot of you. You're not always going to agree with this guy. How do you deal with that conflict? Do you throw him under the bus? Do you figure out a system of how to deal with those things? You probably have some tire tracks on you anyway.
That's my job.
You know, how do you deal with when people, you know, go in, you know, there's a really, there's a gray line between what the council needs to do and what the manager needs to do. And there's this conflict that's built into that because there's a back and forth and sometimes people get upset, or an individual council wants the manager to do something and they say, I don't want to. And so trying to deal with coming up with a communication system and a way to deal with conflict where people can be honest and candid with one another to get through conflict. Because you have it. It's built into the system. And some of the times that creates a better outcome. If you can have a discussion and a disagreement and work through things and ultimately, you don't always get your way. Move on. I've worked with so many dysfunctional boards. You just wonder how anything gets done. And, you know, you're in a much better suit. You're trying to take a good thing and make it better. And so that's a great start. So questions, comments, concerns about?
Yeah, let's talk about conflict for a minute.
Okay.
So it's kind of interesting because at the committee level, especially when I'm running one of the meetings.
The subcommittee?
Subcommittee, yeah. I tend to make it a little more informal, right? And even to the point where if I know there's a citizen in the room that has good information to share, you know, rather than waiting for the last line of the agenda, I'll ask them to participate. Right? So we usually have good discussions, sometimes heated discussions or whatever, you know, and we work it out. At the council level, you basically have three minutes, maybe six minutes to have that conflict and try to resolve the conflict.
Because the rules you have.
Because the rules we have. And so we don't have that, it's not really a debate in the sense of a debate where you get to go back and forth on points.
Right.
And having, adding and subtracting points. I don't know if you ever saw that, Franklin, and how at the council level, you had, spend within open meeting, how you adjusted to that so that bigger problems need bigger discussions, right?
So I would say that the subcommittees in Franklin operated the same way you're describing in a more given, you know, the budget subcommittee or the economic development committee. And then when you got to the council level, we had the three-minute rule, you know. But the chair gets to waive that or someone can cede their time. So if citizens get up and they had three minutes to talk and there was eight people that all had the same opinion, there was a way to deal with that. And you've got a sense, you know, if it's a zoning issue, it tend to be controversial versus, you know, some other thing that more routine. So I think it's up to the council to come up with a way, if you feel it's important for the chair, to allow some flexibility in certain cases. Or, you know, we would let citizens cede their time. I cede my time to the person speaking. And I don't know if you do that, but that way you didn't have nine people saying the same thing. But it was much more of a formal setting, absolutely, because of the number of people and the citizens. And, you know, if everybody went around the room once, such a half hour, you even don't even have any feedback yet.
Right.
So it was hard to manage that. So I don't have a crystal ball. But I mean, if that is a major concern about certainly either a public hearing setting, you might have a different set of rules, we'll go to the ones that tend to be more, you know, length things, zoning issues, or whatever, you know, the other public hearings you have. So you could have a discussion about that at some point to see if you want to change your rules. You control your own destiny. You know, if you feel it would help the council, you should have a discussion about it. And if you feel you like the rules because it keeps someone's timing and thing, you keep them. But the great thing about the council, you can control your own destiny. You don't go to a town meeting, okay? You want to get something done, you get it done, you know? You know. So you'd have to talk to the other members to see if you want to keep the system in place.
I think the system definitely worked.
Right.
By the way, our rules was his rules when we first started. We photocopied the Franklin rules and then maybe
Then you make adjustments.
Franklins.
Both, both, not all.
Other questions or comments or concerns or people you knew? I mean?
Well, I think I'd add too that, you know, to your point about the timing, I actually liked this time because specifically, I know what it felt like coming on the council. It felt like this was a good spot for that to happen. But certainly agree, you know, in the fall and before the budgeting cycle, you know, having another discussion.
You can do it on your own and you can make your own list and then weed it down because you can only accomplish so many things. But if you had three new members this year or whatever, and then they're kind of in days for months, it's good to meet everybody else, get them, talk to them, and then begin to understand the roles and responsibilities. So you almost could have two, and they don't have to be three hours long.
Right.
But you could think about that.
Right.
So other comments before we move ahead?
I have one. New members. New members are not always treated the same in this organization. In my fifth year,
Yeah.
My first one was hell.
Because?
I had councilmen calling me old man.
Okay.
He knew my name was Frank.
Right.
They continued to call me old man.
Okay.
I got put on some committees. Next person takes over as president, I'm stripped of all my committees.
Okay.
I'm given a committee that has had one meeting in two and a half years. No respect. That's the way I felt about it.
Okay.
And I still do today. Now, the last president, he put me back on some committees. His president here has put me on some committees. I feel that I have some input. I'm not a dummy. I've got a bachelor's degree. I worked in management for a company, you know, and I have something to offer. But because I'm in my seventies, they just saw me as, whoa, wait a minute, you're only supposed to be no more than 50 years old on this council.
So did you, when that was happening, did you bring that up or you just sucked it up?
No, I brought it up. I brought it up. And then I finally, after about three months, I brought the two or three of them to a side after a meeting and I said, look, guys, you know my name is Frank. You should start showing me some respect and call me Frank, not old man. But let me tell you something else. At that time, I was 71 years old. There's two things you want to wish for. One, you live as long as I already have.
Right.
And two, you're as healthy as I am.
Cool.
At 71. So you, you, and you, I don't ever want to hear you calling me old man again. My name is Frank.
Okay.
One of them became the president, yes, later, and just removed me from every single thing. I was on, let me see, what committee was that? Oh, yeah, the gambling committee. Wait a minute, the gambling committee has probably never had a meeting ever since it got started.
Okay.
So that's the way all the other counselors knew it. I was talking about it. Counselors have to stick together. If one council member is getting treated that way by someone in charge, they have to step up and do something.
So you have a council code of conduct?
Yeah.
What?
Keep going.
So do you guys have a code of conduct?
I can't say that I've seen it.
Okay, so a lot of, a lot of
I think it's in the rules.
How to treat one another?
With, yeah, it's part of, I think, which section, but, you know, how to address, how to go through the president.
Well, no, no, how to
Those are rules.
So those are rules. So a code of conduct or whatever you want to call it, and communities across the Commonwealth have them. And you can steal them and then make your own. It really talks about how, what your role is, but how to deal with each other and how to respect each other despite illegitimate disagreements. You know, and if you, if you don't have one, you should think about creating one because it sends a message to the community that, hey, we're here, all for you, but we're going to treat each other with respect despite our disagreements. And it's good when people run for office to know what the expectations are when you get elected. If you have a code of conduct, it's, when I join the team, that's what I can expect.
Yeah, so it sets the tone for the culture, basically.
Exactly.
And they're not binding, probably, right?
It's just a code. It's not a bylaw or an ordinance, or it's just a statement of how we're going to work together.
A common understanding of how we're going to treat each other.
Right. And if you had one of those, I mean, and everybody buys into it, and every year you re-adopt it because you have new members come onboard, you know, it takes a quick vote. Or you, then you start off in a good place every year that, oh, yeah, we're going to re-adopt our code of conduct or acknowledge it or however you want to do it. And that sets the tone and allows new members to know what the expectation is of how I, because you don't, you know, people, you don't know what they come, what their motivation is when you get elected. Most people have great motivation, but some people are jerks. And so if you have a standard, then the chair or the president can hold everybody to that standard.
So Jeff, I think that's a valid point. And I think that, of course, Robert's Rules does provide for, you know, raising a point of personal privilege.
Right.
And I think I have unfortunately seen one occasion when I thought that probably ought to have been the remedy asserted by a counselor. And it was not. And I think that's unfortunate because it would, I think, help to, in a sense, embolden the rest of us to, if we are subject to or we observe a matter of disrespect, that in fact, there is a remedy in the rules for that.
So the only downside of that is a lot of people don't understand the Robert's Rules or they're not totally. So you are right. On the other hand, if you have a one-page bullet sheet that you can look at and say, here's the game, here's the rules of the game, folks. You don't have to be a Robert's Rules expert to pull out that. And whether it happens and you try to privately resolve the problem first, you know, through the president or face-to-face, and then if it doesn't work, you bring it up. I mean, you guys can decide your own rules. But I just think that having a standard tells the community, we're here for you and we're going to treat everybody with respect. So up to you. But that's what I see in a lot of communities.
So I looked at our rules procedures. Like, we have a debate decorum in our rules. We have debate limitation. We have, I don't, yeah, I agree, code of conduct.
Hold it what you want.
But there's, there's other sections in here about, you know, let's see, through the president, preservation of decorum and order, appeals from decision of the president, that sort of thing.
And that's excellent. And when's the last time I really read those?
I refer to it all the time.
Okay.
Just got them with them.
And you're right. So and you can pull all those out and put it on a summary sheet. I'm saying that, you know, you ought to be able to just look at something, it's in your binder or in your folder or however you distribute information every meeting, and you can start off to remind people. So
Just add a little bit onto that. They weren't calling me old man in a room away from everybody else.
No, I get that.
They were calling me old man in front of the entire council.
No, the community.
It would be prior to the meeting usually.
Okay, but
Or after meeting, but still, it would be somebody in there. No one else stepped up and said, gee, Frank, no, come on, you guys shouldn't be talking to him like that. How would you feel if someone started talking to you about something or like?
Yeah. So I think, you know what? I think you can decide if you want to create a document, steal a document, have a document, and then you have something to say, well, we all voted on this and you're not following that. And you can do it in a polite and professional way. And then everybody, you know, if you're committed to it, then everybody should stick up for you or anybody individually. That's different for me saying, I disagree with that point. That's not a personal attack. I disagree with your point. You know, I don't like, I would do it somewhat different versus, you know, you don't, someday you might have a more diverse board, which would then be very important in the world that we live in to make sure everybody's treated with respect. You see what happens in the Boston School Committee. You make one tweak and, you know, people are very sensitive today. So just a thought.
I think if there's just a way, again, since, you know, we've got new counselors, I was a prior counselor, came back again. But like between the election and the very first meeting that the new counselors come to, if there was a sit-down as a group to go over the Robert's Rules, to go over the code of conduct or something along those lines, just get everyone on the same page right before the very first meeting, if we can, you know, set something up like that.
You should try to organize that. There is a process for the binder and all that. But I think what I'm hearing you talking about is something more like this.
Yeah, exactly.
The issue is, this is months in the making.
Right.
And then we've got two counselors missing, you know, because everybody, you know, it's tough to get everybody together.
But if you put it on your calendar in March for
Yeah, it's very difficult.
Whatever.
But again, and I'm not, I can't recall what the specifics are of the executive session, but, you know, maybe it's in an executive session beforehand or something along those lines. Okay, so I get it. Again, just at a point where we're all together.
I get it.
Well, we all agree, we're going to, we're all going to abide by these common understandings.
Go over it, like you say, you'll bring up the paperwork, pass up the paperwork to everybody.
And explicitly, yeah. We've never done it.
Exactly. We've never done that.
As a new council, I don't even know that the whole group would need to be part of, even just one person or the president.
All the presidents, the new ones, or the president, vice president, they're getting elected at the same time.
I would have the whole council. It's good to meet people. It's good to renew what goes on. It's good to build relationships. If you spend an hour doing it and you schedule it way in advance and you tell the candidates that are running, this is going to be a meeting on, you know, two weeks after, whatever, after election. What's, and maybe you call the meeting, maybe instead of whatever your regular scheduled meeting is, you schedule one an hour before that and do this. I mean, so you don't have to do it on a special night, but you could do a two-hour get-together, have some lunch, and then go into formal session to reorganize or whatever you do when we do after election. I mean, so you don't have to do it on a special night, but you could do a two-hour get-together, have some lunch, and then go into formal session to reorganize or whatever you do when we do after election. So you could do it on the same night as long as people do it.
Or, or dinner and drinks, as remember that interim manager?
Yeah.
Who's the new CEO and they're like praying for beers, but after the meeting.
So, any other comments or concerns about any of those kind of things? Because those are important things to talk about. Because then they just rub you the wrong way. If you don't get things out on the table and learn how to treat everybody with respect despite the legitimate differences.
I think it's healthy for people to see that, for residents to see that kind of conversation too. So I, I, I would, you know, as much as it might be valuable to do one-on-one, I think it's actually healthy to sort of reaffirm those principles in a public setting.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be very formal, but, but to have, have a discussion about those principles helps sort of set the tone, as I think Jeff said, set the tone for, for residents. When they come to a meeting, they know what to expect and the, the expectation of them when they have a public comment.
So you can figure all that out from when, when's the best time to do it? And, and it is a good idea because people come over, people don't have, you, you have a long history in knowledge and understanding of rules and regular, all the stuff you have, but new people don't know any of that. So, despite, they're on your webpage and-
But, you know, you're learning on the fly, that's basically what you're doing.
Right. So, anything else on any of these kind of issues before we move on?
Can we return back to the goals? I think that was a kind of critical thing.
Right.
So, um, when I explain it to people, I try to do it in puzzle pieces and then bring them all together. So there's a lot of related activities we do throughout the year. I usually sponsor something called the Budget Resolution. I don't know if I modeled that after Franklin in Watertown, but it's been highly successful. It tells the town manager and the financial director how much money they can spend. And then we have a, we try to have a, a specific set of goals for the manager. And then we have budget season, right? So I, I, I don't know if we've done them in sequence the right way ever. Because we should have, as you said, like goal-setting as to where the direction of the town is. Then the budget resolution says, how much money do you have to meet those goals? And then the town manager says, this is how I'm going to do the goals with the budget process.
Right.
And, um, I, I think we've, we've gotten that sequence on that. And, and in our case, um, I found out last year that, um, because I was on the review committee, that the goals that we set for the town manager didn't actually apply to the review at the end of the year.
Oh, great.
Because there was a separate sheet that we reviewed against. So, um, so that's the piece I want you to talk about, if you could. Because I think there's a tie-in between the goals that we set as a body.
Right.
And obviously how we articulate those, right? So how we phrase them and the level of detail that we put in them. And then how the manager reacts to those and then what we should be doing for the, to close the circle, to review on that process.
So, you clearly have to set the goals before the budget. Because otherwise you don't accomplish some of those be, and then you look like you set goals that weren't unachievable, they were unachievable, and the manager can't resolve those. So you have to know how much money you're playing with before you figure out what the goals are. So I think you got it right, you know, you know, set the, you know, do the, the goals, the budget, and then, and then the review. In my, in where I worked, the counselors were all elected in large every two years in November. So every Janu-, every January, um, we would sit down and go through that whole process. And then I would put the budget together, um, and, based on some, what the council wanted to achieve, um, for the upcoming year or the next couple of years. Because it was a two-year term for everybody. So some things were, are obviously weren't going to get accomplished in, in year one. So, it's easy enough either change the system you have, or the sequence, I should say, so they all line up. So if you meet in October for, I don't know when you start your budget, um, the beauty of the city, you have more time. The towns, they start their budget in January. If you have a town meeting in April, or, you know, they start it in September. So depending on your cycle, you start out with, okay, what, what goals do we want to accomplish? And how do those relate to the town manager? What, what, and not all goals are the responsibility of the town manager. Some of them might fall on the council. You know, if you want to accomplish a, a bylaw or ordinance change or zoning change, they can do all the homework, but ultimately it's your goal. Right? So, the great thing about goal-setting, you, you'll have your goals and the manager will have his goals. And hopefully they'll kind of line up. So I don't know how, you said you haven't done that in the past.
We have, I just don't feel that we've always done it successfully in, in the right sequence. I think we were setting goals one year in July. And our fiscal year had already started.
Right. No, you ought to be doing it in the fall. You know, at least if you're going to start the new system, start it in the fall. You still have this, this little get-together af-, right after the election. And then you say, okay, what do we want to accomplish? And then it's also an opportunity for the new members to participate in the goal-setting. Because they might have something they want to bring to the table.
Which is why they ran.
What?
Might be one of the reasons they ran.
That's right. So then they go, hey, can we talk about, you know, you, you gather the list, you narrow it down, and you figure out what's doable and practical and what has to get kicked down the road. Or it doesn't survive the majority of the council. So it, it doesn't get on the list. And then people accept that. Out of the conflict resolution. So, I, I definitely change your sequence and your timing. And, you know, that's all public, so that's good to get people's input. And, you know, when we would do goal-setting, some of them were five, you, so things like economic development are endless. You know, it's not, you can set a goal, but then, you know, you know, where, you can have a budget goal for the next year, or you can have a, you know, other, then sort of you face, you know, I want to build a fire station. Okay, what's the process? But that could take five years, right? By the time you start. So some of these are going to be long-term goals. I always liked, um, if you want to scale a model, the town of Almaths has a really good model that goes from one to five years. By cap-, you know, finances, you know, they had environmental, because they are a coastal community, they had a boatload of coastal issues. But they had economic development and they, and they had a timeline. And then who would do what and who was responsible, you know, from a timing perspective. And so some of those things just went along because they weren't one-year goals. So, I mean, you can look at different models, but I used to do a lot of work with them and I always liked that model because it was, it was flexible and pliable. I mean, if you set goals in January of twenty twenty, would you, how many would you have met once March of twenty twenty showed up? Right? I mean, the whole world imploded, so nobody's fault, so none, and that's what happens in real life, so, um, I, just a thought, just, I think you got a great idea.
Goals.
Well, so that's just a process issue, separate from what goal you want to accomplish.
Setting goals.
Mm-hmm.
You look back last year, see what goals are there, what were completed, what's not completed, and what stage they're in.
So, I, if you, I brought just the, the mini version of this. So, the, so the second question on my questionnaire is, list the three major accomplishments of the council last year. And everybody fill, right? So everybody fills one out and then you can make your list of what was accomplished, um, based on what you started with. And there's always going to be more that come up, you know that. And then you, then you can say, okay, now what do we want to do next? So you, you have a basis of information that you can start from, and not all those are going to get accomplished. And then you just keep moving the train down the track. But you have a history, um, to look back on year after year, and then you can look ahead.
So would it be appropriate that I'm setting, I'm going to go back to the fire building station? My goal wasn't to have it built, obviously. My goal is to hit certain milestones in that building project that we have accomplished in a year as part of the goal.
Okay.
So the funding is there.
Now, it's already there?
The funding is there.
And you hide an architect, I mean, a project manager?
Process.
Okay.
And it's, you know, for me personally, my goal is to ensure that there's no delays in that project.
Okay.
I look at the town manager and, and want to know that we're kicking the pants of the architect if we're not getting stuff timely. We're doing that to the fire chief if we're looking for data. There should be no delays. It should be happening like this. So to me, that's a goal. Now, I know we won't build a fire station, but anything that can happen in the year within the budget constraint. In other words, if, if we had expended the money that was allocated, I understand, uh, we have to come back to the council, we need more money. Where is it in the budget? Can we find it? So to me, I, I hear what you're saying. So I look at like the fire billing, a three-year goal.
Okay.
To actually see a shovel in the ground.
So just, so I'm clear. You've authorized a bond.
No, no, this is just design.
We funded, we funded schematic design.
Okay, and you have a project manager?
Not yet.
So you, you start, so, so once you get one, they should put a timeline together to do exactly what you want, right? And the architect should ultimately have, like, you know, it's going to take fourteen months to, from time I put a shovel in the ground to when, whatever the timeline is. And they should give you a monthly update. So anytime you build a, a public building, you know, the building, the committee that is in charge of that, if you have one, and meets every month or every two weeks, should have a chart of progress. And if something is going to get kicked out because the steel isn't delivered, you know that, okay? So that, that should be embedded in, um, both the project manager and the architect's role to keep you up to date on a rate, um, say, a monthly basis. Of, of the milestones that are ahead of you and the ones that have gotten accomplished. And if there's a, if there's a problem, you would know about that. And if the problem's caused because it's beyond anyone's control, at least you know that. And you're not saying, what the hell's going on? Well, this way, something hasn't been delivered, or I can't get this, or, so that should be, um, set in stone when you start the process.
Right.
And, and when you hire a project manager, that, one of the things in the RFP should be, I want a monthly update of the, and the architect the same way. Because they're going to have conflicting timelines.
Yeah.
As every building project does.
Yeah.
So you can, but that way you can track it. And then, you know, once, so, so once you do the feasibility, then the council's going to have to go back and if they're ready to rock and roll, authorize a bond, I'm guessing, or debt exclusion or whatever. I don't know what your financial position is. And then keep going, so that would be a goal whenever you set that. Right?
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Personally me learning, so if, if Matt has that project in mind.
It's going to be a council's decision.
Yeah, but, but let's say in the beginning, very early on, he's saying, I really want this in four years or three years. I think we need it in three years.
Okay. Whatever, it's X, doesn't matter what it is.
And he's backed up to the point where, okay, that means we need a project manager hired by next November. A backup from there. That means by next month, I need to see this milestone. I, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Are you saying you should share that with us? And that way we can support that, we can-
No, what I'm suggesting is, if it's the goal of the council to build a fire station, and they both, they've appropriated funds to start the process and everybody's still on board, then, um, have you hired a feasibility person yet? So they have a timeline to complete their report, I'm filling in their contract to bring back to the council. Or if it's a subcommittee, I don't know what, what you're doing with that. Okay, here's my report. It's X dollars to get Y. And I can do it in this timeline. What do you guys want to do? Okay, I need twenty-two million dollars. And then by law, you have to hire a project manager before you hire anybody else. And in the, so you have to do an RFP, request for proposal, and then you put your specifications of what you want the project manager to achieve. Okay? And then you hire the architect, and all that has a timeline.
Right. And we can prescribe that timeline?
Yes and no. Procurement takes longer than you think. So you can prescribe it if you have a realistic timeline. Because there are statutory timelines built into the system, first of all. And then there's practical timeline. You pick a vet, you pick the, um, project manager, now you have to negotiate a contract. And you can do that a day or three months, depends where you're at. So if you have a realistic timeline, um, then yes. But if you think, I'm hiring, oh, I'm, I'm picking, I'm voting up, uh, uh, next week to hire this guy and the following week you're going to have a contract, that's not practical. All these things take time and you can get that information from, you know, what, what's the normal timeline to do this? So then you can have some expectations. But people, um, public sector construction takes a lot longer than private sector construction because of the legal, um, advertising, bidding, negotiating, et cetera, et cetera. You can still have all that, you just have to understand the system.
Eric, was that your question or was your question more around, you know, taking Matt's goal and sort of making that a council goal?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Again, this is me learning, but I would imagine the way that something like this would work is a conversation, where we say, okay, we want this in three years. Like, let's ballpark it, let's figure out the milestones, including one for next month. You know, we all sign up and say, that makes sense. Everyone who seems to know the space agrees to that. And we get things to happen to hit that. It's not like, oh, we slipped a bond or like, I'm not sure, let me check.
So that would be on your goals, fire station, first six months, second six months. You know, you can put that in your goal. You, you're right. I mean, but don't start spending money unless six people agree. Because it takes two-thirds of a vote to borrow money.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you have five people, you either got to convince somebody or wait another year. So, I mean, that's why you have the conver-, the goal conversation. And then you bring it back to a vote of the council so that, that you, the council as a whole and the community knows, we're going down that road. So you have to understand, if you don't have the vote, if he has a great idea and only four people like it, sorry, you don't get your idea. That's just the system. It's democracy. But once you all concur on a goal, then you can set up a timeline for each one of those goals. And, and some timelines to do that. And then sometimes things get pushed. That's just like, you know, it's like trying to get a plumber to your house. Good luck. Other questions? So, yeah, set up a process whenever you want to do it later this year to start that, you know, what are, what are, everybody brings five goals. And then you narrow it down to X, or some of them get stretched out to a year or two or three from now. And, and you start down the road and you vote on that. The citizens know what you want to do, how you're going to lead the community. And, you know, it doesn't just have to be, obviously, a fire station, it could be a lot of, you know, we want a green community, we want more sidewalks, we like a new park. You know, we need to hire more public safety officials, you know, whatever you come up with, then you have to say, okay, how's this fitting into our financial plan? It's nice to do, we want four more people, but we can only have money for two. So, um, that's why you do the goals and then, um, then you look at the budget and you go back and look at the goals and say, which one of these can we accomplish? You know, and how much, how much is cash, how much is borrowing, how much is, you know, funding grants, whatever, you're, you know, where are you going to get the money? So.
How many towns, Jeff, incorporate their master plan into their sort of council or, or town-wide goals and?
So, a lot of master plans just sit on shelves. The question is, how Siri is, is the, you know, and the other thing is, you know, master plans, it's got two-hundred-and-eighty different things. Everybody in the free world wants to accomplish. Okay, how many of these are practical, doable? And so what we would, um, do is, you know, look at the master plan and say, you know, what can we control and how much does it cost? Some things are simple, some thing, you know, you know, we want a sidewalk to every park in town. Well, good luck. I mean, we can't do that. So, I mean, I think it's a good idea to look at the master plan and look at, if it's in bullet points by category, you know, recreation and, and what do you want to do? And you can send that out prior to the goal-setting and see if anybody wants to bring any of those issues up to accomplish. And some of those, you know, the master plan is usually a ten-year document, so it doesn't have to be accomplished in year one. You can, hey, we want to do this, we want a new park in four years. Okay, how do we start that process? But it's good to look. But it's good to look at, I mean, it's a community document that everybody had input into, but some of it's just pie in the sky, in my experience, but some of it's good stuff.
Well, I just came off of being on master plan, we, the town's coming up with a new master plan right now. Um, so, you know, again, we've been meeting the past year and a half getting that done, so the, you know, the town's spending good money on a company to do it. So I think one of the things I'd like to see is that master plan make sure it gets to every counselor before we, um, you know, sit down and and talk about goals, for sure, and then, you know, obviously get a sense for what, because we did a lot of community outreach too, or getting feedback on a variety of different topics and stuff.
I would up my game, I would make a presentation with the council, once it's done. Make sure everybody has one in advance.
Yeah.
And whoever's the chair or the group or the committee that did all this work, come and make a fifteen, twenty-minute, whatever is allowed, to say, hey, this is the process we use, and here's the ten takeaways. Um, and can we include this in our goal discussion? You know, I mean, you just spent all this time and money, shouldn't the community know what the...
Well, this is unfortunate, I think, that the town in Bridgewater has done over the years, we've created all sorts of plans, downtown revitalization, master plans, unfortunately, like you said, a lot of times they just sit on the shelf.
Yeah.
And we've spent, you know, good money after more good money and not putting those plans into into play, and then unfortunately, by the time we make it to it, well, now they're outdated, we have to update the plan again.
So every year I would, um, after we adopted the master plan and we presented it, every year I would present to the council anything that was accomplished during the year that was on the master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not just the council, you know, that has to do something. So I, we would get an annual update on the master plan and what was done and what's left to do. And, you know, it's an annual meet, you know, you have a twenty minutes, a half hour, and, you know, because the master plan's usually laid by category, you know, and it's got twenty things in each category, whatever, hey, we got A, we got category one, we did these two things.
Yeah, so a progress report, basically.
Yeah, a progress, an annual progress report on the master plan. And then some things will always fall off, because that's what master plans do, and some things will rise to the top, because they're important. So I would make a presentation.
Okay.
If it's allowed by the president, or whatever your rules are, so... And then put that in front of the council and the goals, and at least have a discussion.
When is the final draft of that expected, Michael? Have you got a timeline on that for the company?
I think it's, I'll have to look, I think it's in front of the planning board. Planning board has it, um, I don't know, I mean, they're gonna start reviewing it. Um, but the implementation plan hasn't been finalized yet, but they're they're reviewing it.
But the final, the plans we put together by the company that we that we worked with, that's been submitted to the town at this point?
Is that that hundred-and-twenty-six-page document that was sent for every council member?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, you're lucky it's short.
New British version.
Yeah, that's the reader's digest. Um, all right, anything else that people wanna bring up until we keep going here? Does anybody wanna take a stretch for five, or do you wanna keep going? It's up to you. Okay, cool.
Go ahead.
If you need a restroom, it's down the hall. Um, so, I mean, I guess the next thing is the priorities of the council. Because, you know, what do you wanna accomplish, I think we're going through that. Um, what do you, you know, in the next couple hours, what do you wanna walk away with? I have to leave by midnight, I turn into a pumpkin. I bet you wanna leave earlier, so... So for the rest of the time, what would you like to see accomplished?
I mean, personally, I'd like the goals discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So here's a perspective I'd like to kind of introduce, because you you talked about Franklin and Franklin's at large, Tom's in at large, I think there's others, but we're we're seven district and two at large.
Right.
Right, so Matt's in at large, um, and then Dennis who's in here at at large. But the rest of us, um, you know, represent a district, you know, right now precinct. So so my approach has always been that I look inward to my district and see what's going on. Obviously, I have to vote on things much larger than that, you know, budget process, when it comes up, a school or a fire station or something else, right? But I I tend to look at my district and look at projects needed in my district. Not that I'm being selfish about it, but I'm representing my district.
Correct.
So I look at things like, you know, Michael was talking about the park, so, you know, the town bought five acres, I was pushing that for a long time and working through the project management process to get that done. And, um, Michael did, you know, a huge, huge effort on that. And so when I bring goals to the the council level, yeah, sure, I have larger sense of goals, but I try to make it, you know, what is what is it worth to my district? Whether it be...
So what would be unique to your district versus anybody else's district? A sidewalk?
Um, unique to my district, so I have...
Because I don't know anybody's district.
Yeah, I I have, uh, when we, if we license another restaurant, and I have twenty-one restaurants or places to eat in my district.
So everybody can walk, that's great.
Well...
Okay.
I probably have the most liquor licenses in my district.
Okay.
That's changed a little bit.
That's just from a historical development, okay, okay.
Um, I have half of downtown, the central business district.
Okay.
You know, so so a lot of things, um, like my, when we get to, um, try to keep it open, being logged compliant, but when we get into a discussion about zoning, you know, one of my interests is gonna be signs, because my district has a lot of signs and a lot of businesses.
Right.
And, um, you know, a lot of, lot of need to advertise business, that sort of thing. And, you know, so we'll be looking at, um, you know, does does what we put into into effect, you know, sixty years ago, in some cases, or longer, you know, really comply to today's needs?
So why do you think that's a district issue? Because your downtown is a community.
Um, so only because I helped two people this this week with issues about about these these issues, so...
Right, but I mean, most of the things in, if you, you know, the downtown is a community downtown, and yes, you represent that, but, um, I mean, ultimately, things like zoning and signing is a is a community-wide discussion, isn't it?
It is, but but, for example, Pete and I worked a couple of years ago on mixed use in the central business district.
Okay.
So a majority of that impact was going to be felt in my district, you know, so...
So, but at the end of the day, it's six votes to change the zoning, right?
Sure.
So how does that, so you...
I have to be a, I have to be a champion of the issue. I don't have to be, it doesn't have to be my issue or their issue.
Right, okay.
But, you know, in some cases, I have to champion the issue for my district.
That's okay.
Whether it's paving or sidewalk or a...
I mean, that's the mixed blessing of, so in one way, the mixed blessing of the of the fact that you have precincts is, um, every, you're closer to your voters, because you only represent, you know, I mean, ex-people.
Right.
But, um, in some ways, you're competing, you know, I remember I was the Commissioner of Public Works at Cambridge, and come election season, everybody wanted their street done, and they have a precinct. You know, uh, hey, we need, I gotta get this done, and, okay, call the city manager, which ones am I supposed to do here, because I can't keep everybody happy with their precinct requests uh, in September before the November election. So it's a mixed blessing, and and, you know, when we start handing out, you know, sidewalk money or road money or park or tree money, you know, do you split it six ways? Or do you look at the the biggest priority?
Well, that's an excellent question, because Troy split it six, seven ways, and he tried to keep the road process evenly split.
Do you have a payment management plan?
Yeah, or I don't know how old it is now, but we do.
Because that's an unbiased opinion.
Yeah.
You might not like that, because it's based on...
I don't like it.
Yeah, right. But, you know, if you, you know, that's a understanding between the council and and when you're going through the budget process, if everybody has to get a little piece of the pie, then the council has to figure that out, right? You know, hey, we're gonna do a half-mile sidewalk in your thing, and we're gonna plant new public shade trees in yours, and we're gonna, you know, fix this in yours. I mean, zoning is a community issue, even though it's in your district, but if you if you're handing out, that's up to you whether you wanna operate that way. The council has to decide that.
Yeah, I don't think we operate strictly that sort of district.
No, no, I understand.
District, I mean, I feel as much ownership in the central business district as as Bill does, even though none of it's my jurisdiction.
Okay.
I guess the weird thing for me is, like, when I think of goals, so maybe even using the fire department, the goal isn't to have another fire department, the goal is to have coverage for fire services in town. And I think all of us would say, we agree.
Right.
We might disagree on the the step to take to get there, like, we might say it's this, we might say it's that.
Yeah, right.
But I guess when I think about this team, it's like, you know, do we want, is public safety, is there something about public safety that needs to get better, or that we need to dial back?
Right.
And do we all align on it? And then we debate the actions, and it's the same thing, I think, with economic realty. What is the number we look at to say this year was better than last? Is it projects, is it...
So I would suggest that what you just described is one of the second most important thing this council will do, set goals in strategic direction. Because you know what a council meeting, you spend all this minutia on things, you know, little things, yeah, you gotta do them, but if you look back ten, ten minutes, do you remember what you even did? I mean, they just come week after week, or meeting after meeting, and you're legally accountable to do them, and some are ceremonial, and some are, you know, give Mrs. Jones a proclamation. Uh, but the big issues, the economic, the zoning issues, the public safety issues, the recreation and open, you know, the big categories, that's where you should be, but they're hard, and they take time, and you don't get instant reward. When you give Mrs. Jones a proclamation, she loves all of you, you get to smile and go home, right? So you get the quick pat in the back. Figuring out a fire station issue is a grind. But that's where your energy, figuring out economic development in the downtown or signed bylaws, which are the most confusing things in the known free world to to get it right, takes time. And that's where you should be spending your energy.
Yeah.
Most of it, not all of it.
I wonder, before determining goals, if, goals presumably are informed by values. I'm wondering if you need to first come to some, this common set of understanding of what your values are, which is kind of a more abstract notion than specific goals and strategies.
Yeah, but that can be part of your discussion.
Yeah.
Um, when you start, you know, what do we wanna, what do we want? It's almost back to the master plan, what do we wanna be as a community?
Right.
And where do we wanna be ten years as a community? Because you've already probably been around two-hundred, three-hundred years.
And and that's the odd part, the the council doesn't participate in the master plan process.
Well, that's a mistake. Okay, because at the end of the day, who controls the destiny of this community?
Well, I I have to correct that.
You had a chance to do it, right?
No, I I was the council member.
Okay, okay.
Until December, it wasn't complete. We had not finished the zoning section, and we were told that, all right, committee, uh, your year is up, you're all done, we, the consultant and us, we will continue it. If we need your help in the zoning, we'll call you.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, nobody called me yet.
Okay.
I know a little bit about zoning, I'm not the expert, but I know a little bit. I have brought out, every time they had these things, write down what you wanted, blah, blah, blah. I brought out something that nobody liked.
Okay.
So I was going...
But zoning is one of the most important aspects of your community.
Mm-hmm.
It establishes what kind of community you wanna be and where you wanna go. And it's complicated. I can, I can tell you, having, you know, we had economic developments, we would spend hours and hours on two words, you know, will, shall, may, um, special permit, by right, uh, you know, it's complicated, so it has to take time. Because if you don't get it right, I mean, the beauty of the council, you screw it up, just go through it again and change it, you don't have to go back to the town meeting and...
But zoning is a lot more than just words. Zoning, especially in our town, Peter just brought up an example, downtown redevelopment.
Right.
That whole section was self-sold for mixed use.
Right.
Ninety-six Main Street, I just had to put an ordinance in, why? Because the lot went this way, big house here, big backyard, when they drew the line, they split the property right in two.
Mm-hmm.
So the front part that's actually on the road was mixed use. The back part, which had no access to, was residential.
Oh, residential, okay.
So what they wanted to do is, they're gonna take down the old house, build a mixed-use plot, and put a parking lot back here.
Mm.
Those are the kinds of things that we should be looking at when you're doing rezoning. Not just, just put a line through it and that's it. You have to evaluate every single piece. You also have to look in town and say, well, you know, we just don't want any retail, we don't want mixed use up there. So what if that town has twenty-four thousand cars a day that goes by it? So what if it's, it's the main artery coming out of one of our surrounding towns? We don't want any mixed use.
So let me ask you, does the council meet twice a month, or...
Twice a month.
And when do you have, like, I I know you have subcommittees, like, I can, I looked at them, you have economic, you got, uh, you got some standing and you got some ad hoc. When is the council as a group need in a workshop to talk about zoning or public safety?
This is the second meeting, the first one was in two thousand eleven.
What?
This is the second time we've...
Talking about the twenty-twenty...
No, but so my point is, if 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 you wanna talk about complicated issues, the subcommittee's okay, but it's kind of limiting. Whereas if you have a, no, but if you have a council of the whole meeting, and it's a workshop, and it's about downtown redevelopment, what it, right? Then you can spend two hours focusing on one topic.
Yeah, the closest we come to that is probably a discussion item on our council.
Yeah, but you got...
Right, it's not enough by now, it's not enough.
No, you need to pull, the big issues, you need to pull aside and have an honest discussion, debate, um, because it's complicated. What do you wanna accomplish by the zoning? What's the vision of the community? Is it based on the master plan that says we wanna do this, and now we gotta figure out how the zoning works to make it happen? You can't do that in a discussion.
Right, yeah.
Right? It's a disservice to the community.
Right, if I take one thing away from tonight, this is it. Because we haven't done that as a behavioral, organizational behavior in the past. And yet, we've got a massive thing for zoning up in the in the planning board and committee right now. We've had a massive, you know, discussion about downtown revitalization. We've had, um, the the master plan, which is different than the zoning.
Right.
Um, I don't even think I saw a draft, and it's gone to planning board for a review and vote. And we haven't, as a group, ever had a discussion about what are we doing with these things long-term? We've got great finances now, our financial director now has, and Michael have...
Where you can shift your focus.
Five-year plans on capital planning.
Right.
And stabilization's in good shape, and and, you know, revenue projections around three years anyway. So we can shift our our focus.
Yeah, but so, I mean, if this is a critical point in your history with this, why wouldn't you have a separate meeting?
Yeah.
That says, the only thing on the agenda is call the order, um, discussion about whatever, economic development or zoning or whatever it is, invite who all the players need to be at the table. It's a public meeting.
So that's a workshop sort of thing.
I would make it a public meeting.
Right, but...
What?
It's a working...
It's a work, I mean, you're not gonna let everybody, you know, you have to decide if you need to just, you know, work as a group, or whether you're gonna take input, that's your decision. But you might have to spend three meetings on that to get to a consensus, because at the end of the day, you need six hands to go up. And everybody has to be satisfied it's the right thing for the town and the district.
Yeah, to your, to your point, and and I I agree with you on that. And I think that what we have on our doorstep right now, uh, we're awaiting receipt of the results of a charter review process.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna need to implement that. Um, we are re-codifying our zoning ordinance.
Right.
And that's been a long time coming.
Right.
Uh, and as we discussed earlier today, uh, we now have the need, we've just recently learned, to re-precinct.
Right.
Uh, so these are three monumental challenges for the council. Apart from any other policy matters or goals or our usual day-to-day business.
Yeah.
Uh, how do we find opportunities to deal with these?
I I I, my answer is, you know, what, I don't know, some is not a popular time, and I don't know what your timeline is, but you set, set up every other month or every month, and people don't wanna be out anymore, but focus on a single thing, you know, on on what?
An additional meeting is basically what we're gonna have to do.
And limit it to one issue.
Yeah.
And... And whether it's zoning, or if it's redistricting, to understand all that, that's a complicated process. Or it's whatever the other two or three, you know. And, and spend your time and energy on that to get it right. Because the other stuff is just in perpetuity. You know, your meeting just comes and goes and comes and goes, and it all gets forgotten in history. Most, most of it. But zoning is gonna stand, should stand, you know, hey, we're gonna do this for the next ten years, then the world changes. So we're gonna have, look at it just like you look at your charter every so often. And then you maybe have a charter, take all the charter review stuff and have a meeting. And we like that, we don't like that, have you thought of that, what about this? But, but really spend all your time and energy focused on the big stuff. Because that's gonna impact your community the most. Redistricting for ten years, right?
Sure.
I will. You know, the charter review, you have it in your charter every six years, right? You look at the charter. So that would be up to you if you want to do it, but my suggestion is, is start a series of workshops on big stuff. And one of the workshops should be on goals. And one on whatever you want to discuss. So I know I've just given you more time to be out, you'll probably shoot me tomorrow for suggesting it, but. Otherwise, things just, you can't have a twenty-minute discussion on zoning.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, no.
I mean, unless it's a simple, you know, some correction of some language, or a map correction, or something. Or anyway. That didn't really get to the, I mean, what are the five priorities of the board, the council? But I think it was a good discussion, so. What are the priorities of the council? Because.
Do you want to go around and, you know, ask each council what the town's buy bar or spitball, or?
Whatever you want.
Well, to.
Just go around the table and throw in two and three, and we'll write them down and, you know.
React as, as stewards of, of town assets.
Right.
Certainly one function I think is legitimate for us.
You mean facilities and, oh, I'm talking about buildings, land, both?
I am speaking specifically about buildings, capital of hard assets, but nonetheless, you know, any form of asset you want to look at. Could also take the argument, of course, you know, we're here to safeguard taxpayers and to act in the best interest of taxpayers and to preserve capital in that, in that respect.
So would that be a review? So what would be the goal? Is it, I mean, do you have all facilities?
Sound financial management, and which I, I believe we actually exercise now.
Okay. But do you have aging infrastructure or expanded demand on facilities? Or do you want to change energy consumption, or?
Well, I think we generally would agree that, you know, there are some facilities in town that historically, you know, have lacked routine maintenance and upkeep.
We practice deferred maintenance. We practice deferred maintenance, as Rudy Giuliani called it.
So we'll just put that as goal for now. We're not gonna, we're not eliminating anything, I was just trying to edit out.
I have it had as a goal, implement the, implement the traffic circulation elements of the downtown revitalization plan to improve circulation patterns in the central business district.
Okay, well, so we're just gonna make a list right now?
Yeah.
That's good. Anybody throw them on?
Can I, can I ask a question about that?
Oh, no, too bad, no, go ahead.
So I, and I, I'm also, I'm gonna be probably a little bit of a goal versus action. Like, to me, that sounds like an action. So my question to you would be, like, why would we do that? Like, what, what comes out of that?
Um, the way human beings move through space is like critical to economic and community development. And just business, to business development, to increasing our tax base, to quality of life for citizens.
So that might end up on your workshop as part of the discussion.
I think what would be in the workshop is breaking.
If you're doing a zoning.
The math, the downtown revitalization plan, going over the traffic studies that were done, and that plan, and, and what you're asking about, and say, okay, what, what's feasible, what's not, you know, what do we need to go to the state to and get approval for, because we're dealing with the eighteen-twenty-eight car? Because that was always, the discussion's going back to that plan.
It's been seven years.
And, right, and has it, has that discussion happened with the state yet?
So if you have that whole economic, so then you bring that up as one of the topics inside that.
Sure.
So.
And then set the goal from there. Okay, so how do we now make those changes into the traffic patterns of downtown, how we fund it, blah, 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 blah?
Just pull all the cities down and we'll hide from the public. No, only here.
So obviously, I won't go to the fire department right away.
Somehow, I think that's gonna be on the list, I'm gonna throw it out the limb.
But, you know, I sit here and think about things that, you know, that Eric has said, and even the conversations I liked before, what you were talking about, championing, you know, your district and what it means. And, and certainly, he, he is a champion for that, and it is an impact on the entire community. So I sit here and I think about, what are the things that I hear every single day? And the things that I hear every single day is, what a terrible-looking downtown that we have, that we've let it fall apart. And, and most citizens in town blame this group of people for that.
That's because you're sitting here.
Whether it's, whether it's rightful or not, it doesn't matter. But that's the only thing that I hear. Why does it look like that? Why is there no business downtown? I wouldn't go down there. So I try to think about, as a goal, and him being a champion for that area, you know, as a group collectively, how do we change the downtown? What is the next step? I don't know if it's zoning. I don't know if it's going back to the developer and trying to hammer out an agreement again that was gonna propose a large redevelopment. I, I don't know what the answer is, but what I do know collectively as a community, we're upset, myself personally, with what the downtown looks like. And we have a new business owner in, in a tavern that invested money and was, has been doing great. But a lot of it was hinging on the development of this property. And I'm afraid of what's going to be the next step of this project not moving forward, which is gonna be more businesses continuing to close. And, and people being upset generally in town. So, so at least in my head, if it's not the fire department, that's what I hear all the time from everyone.
Definitely.
What's going on downtown, it looks, it looks terrible. So how do, how do we fix that?
So the way, you get to start the conversation, okay? And you have to, it's zoning, obviously, is a huge part of all that. Obviously, if there's traffic issues, I don't know, I mean, I've been through downtown, but, you know, so.
So we've been on a long road, and I would defer to the champion of, like, sort of that redevelopment, as to what now, have, having done all of those things, what is now still the hiccup with getting that project developed?
It's zoning, it's signs, it's traffic, it's maybe diffs, you know, district improvement financing, if you want to look at that. There are different ways, but it's a, it's a long-term, never-ending process. I mean, downtown's across America disappearing, okay? And now malls are starting to close, okay? Because of what's going on in, in online commerce dot com. So, but everybody wants a nice downtown. We spent years and years and years, like, we want tablets, we're not coming there. I mean, we would call companies, we don't want to do that. You know, we've got a store here, we've got a store there, you know. It's really hard. We will, I mean, our downtown, it took us ten years. We got a five-million-dollar grant, though, from the federal government to redo our traffic patents, do parking things. There's a downtown, a not-for-profit downtown partnership, which would be like a chamber of commerce, and they've championed. They've, they've held festivals four times a year. So do you have any not-for-profit groups out there? Do you have a downtown business association?
We have a downtown.
Do they run, do they run any kind of, you know, we shut the down.
They're not super active.
So we would shut the down, the Main Street down once a year and have a festival and have booths, and then we would have.
Yeah, we should try shutting down downtown for a day.
Well, no, but, but we, but, but what happened was, one of the, one of the benefits of getting the, the grant was to reconfigure our traffic so we could actually do that, to bring, so there's so, you have to just grind it out, talk about it.
So I think, I hear exactly the same things that Matt hears.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of trash downtown, the buildings look horrible, we need more businesses, et cetera. And until about a year and a half ago, I couldn't speak about the rotary area because my mother owned a piece of property.
Okay.
You know, conflict of interest. Even had a call with the state going, it's going down. Anyway, so now that's clear and done. And like Pete said, you know, my focus can also be on the central area, not just central business district, but the rotary itself, right? So we run into, and this is the challenge, and maybe you can give us some ideas. We run into three different opinions about our, our, what we call downtown bridge water. One is, don't ever change a thing.
Yeah, of course.
Love it as it is.
Right.
And the, and the comment is.
Let it die on the vine, okay?
Right. Number two is, follow the traffic pattern, make some radical changes, shift the comment over and do that. And there's a lot of people that believe in that, that structure, where we're rejigging the traffic patterns by moving physical roads and things.
Okay.
And then the, the third element in town is that they don't even know we have a downtown, you know. So there, there's, there's a lot of people in town that don't participate in town things, they don't know that we've moved beyond town meeting, et cetera. And so there's, there's that element, I'm not worried about that element. But somehow, in a workshop or someplace else.
You need a workshop.
We have to find the compromise that comes up with a solution. Because right now, I don't see a solution to our downtown problem. Because our, our responsibility, his responsibility, ends at the edge of the building that's private property.
So a couple of things, have you ever had a charrette invited everybody to the table about just the downtown?
Yeah, a couple of different times.
Well, going back to our, our prior community economic developer in Deona, we were starting to set up some downtown meetings with business owners, property owners, having some conversations. We had a few meetings, but that hasn't happened.
Was the council there?
I was president, I'm also a member of the council.
What?
Yeah, members, individual members.
And who markets your downtown?
That should probably fall on the community economic director.
Well, but you need private investment as well, or, or you just can't, you know.
Well, the challenge of downtown in the circle is that there's actually only very limited spots that are actually businesses. You've got the Mason's Building.
Right.
So that's not going anywhere, the Christian Science Building, a church, another church, a town hall, which is our building. And so I, I actually walked around and took inventory of all the buildings in which were vacant, which were busy. And it's actually quite full right now.
Okay.
And, but the number of actual businesses that would be, could be elevated are probably down to about seven.
Okay.
Right, so it's not, it's not like we're talking about fifteen or twenty or walkable mall.
Right, right.
Because when you go down the street one way, you run into BSU, and you got the fire department there, you got two more churches.
Right.
There, when you go down the other way, you know, then you're talking about Broad Street and that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, players talk about those spots as like missing teeth. They don't contribute to economic vitality at all. There's no action going on there.
So, so where, where I was, we were just hoping that some of the business owners would pass away. Because they were unwilling to reinvest in dilapidated buildings. And it's private property. And unless you set up your own corporation, you know.
Yes, I have to talk about here, by understanding all the economics now of downtown.
Right.
It's not gonna change quickly.
Right.
I don't know.
Right, but I think it, it's a grind, so, you know.
But I also, like, this is where I keep coming back to the goal. And I know everyone has a lot more history with this particular topic, but. Is our goal to bring in thriving businesses? Or is our goal to make it look pretty? Or is our goal to make traffic go through there? Right? If the goal is only to make it look pretty, we could go in with some program to beautify the storefronts and we accomplish the goal. So that's where I, like, I know we're talking about the downtown, it's like, problems.
Some people want to have all three.
But we need to pick.
I agree.
We need to be.
They're not really expensive, though.
That's why you have to have a meeting, okay?
Or prioritize the goal, stuff like that. Is it beautification, is it trying to help?
I think you get the master plan.
Because we'll, we'll pull different levers depending on, is it all three, or is it something I don't?
But it, it can be also, as you said, sequence.
Right. I'm not saying it can't, I'm just saying something needs to be on paper that we all look at and say, I'll take an action on that.
I think you need to spend time as a group together and talk about.
That's not, that's not this.
That's not tonight. Tonight's making a list. Because, because normally what you do is get a, you, you make a list that there was a consensus on. And then from that, you bring it to a council meeting and adopt the list, and then you figure out how to accomplish all that.
But I thought tonight we were, we were talking about the things we thought should be on the list.
Yeah, no, downtown economic redevelopment is on the list.
Yeah, but that's, that's not something, I, I guess, maybe my question is, if that's a goal, how do I know whether or not we need it? What is the, what is?
The goal, then, how will you know? Come back in ten years.
Got to flush it out.
You have to flush it out.
But, yeah, and, and we have to do that because, you know, there was a, there was a person that made the comment, and I think it was probably in one of the goals, that we need to get into the twenty percent, you know, design phase for, for the downtown area. But unless we do that decision, what is the priority of downtown? Then we can't do twenty percent engineering.
Yeah.
That's where, like, I.
You need to spend a lot of time as a group, start in the conversation. And what is the goal? And what's the sequence? And what's attainable? And how are we gonna finance whatever we're gonna do? It's a complicated issue, and that's why it takes a long time.
I think something that can be useful is looking to, looking to other models and see what other towns have done.
So when we started our economic development, we turned to Natick. And we actually had the woman that was in charge of that redevelopment come to our community and talk. And we're still not done. We still have a couple of pieces of property that are, they're just totally gross. And, you know, we just, they, we own it, we have a train station downtown. Somebody just put up two-hundred-and-fifty apartments next to the train station.
Imagine that.
So they're gonna walk, they need some, you need masses of people to have us downtown survive.
Can we write that down?
I'm sorry, that, if you look at all the economic success of downtowns, you need people to spend money. And they're not driving from the other end of Bridgewater to come there.
That's what Matt was talking about. We were trying to get people downtown, because the guy across the street wants to sell more haircuts, the tavern wants to sell more meal, the House of Pizza wants to sell more pizza, and, you know, we may not get those people.
Well, anybody that's gonna come, they're gonna tell you density, density, density. So they might not want that, but that's what they're gonna tell you, okay? They're gonna say, how do you bring more people? You have to live there. Or within a walking distance of, we're gonna spend some dollars. I gotta, I wanna go out and walk and, you know, get a pizza, or I wanna get a shoe, or whatever you sell downtown. But you need to go through that process. And bring somebody in from not your town to say, how have we succeeded, and what were the pitfalls?
Low, low is real successful.
Right, but they got a hundred thousand people.
Right, I know.
You need to go pick a community that, you know, and, and get, have them, and you can get state grants for some of this. And they have to pay somebody to help you do that.
Okay. I'd like to say something.
You don't have to agree with me, I'm just telling you, you have to go through a process.
And my priorities here for downtown, number one, safety. The people stay out of downtown because they can't cross the sidewalks. I know two women were almost hit by a car. The other day, we're at the flag raising ceremony. Here's the stop sign right over there. We counted seventeen cars, three trucks, including a tractor-trailer, never stopping at the stop sign, and just kept right on going.
Okay, so.
We were only there an hour.
So here's my point, that's on the agenda when you talk about downtown.
But no, it hasn't brought it on up?
No, but, so the, so the, the issue is, is one of your goals is to talk about economic development in downtown. If it is, we'll move it on. Because you have to have a separate whole discussion about how you're gonna accomplish that. But if that's a goal, you just put it on the list.
I guess in my mind, my goal, whether it's right or wrong, was to look at the project that almost came to be. And a goal is to get that developer back at the table and conclude a successful project.
That could be part of the mission.
Because that will start the revitalization and some of these other things that we're talking about. It will allow us to have the funding to make safety improvements and some sidewalk improvements and ADA compliance. But without that, it's like the foothold, it's the foundation to what could be in that downtown area. So, so to me, the goal is just simply, my goal would be, or collectively, I would hope, is to do whatever we can as a town possible to get that developer back to the table and invest in our community.
Here's the list of things we need to do, and that's one of them. Safety, another one. And then just make, you know, density, another one, beautification, another one. Okay, how do we, here's the list, how do we tackle each one of these? Who's gonna do it, and what are we gonna do it? Right? Safety, I want the police department to review the current safety plan. Or a traffic engineer, depending on, I don't know your issue, you know? I want to talk about zoning, you want to talk about, you know, sitting down with the developer, one-on-one with, you know, the manager and whomever, and saying, how do we get you here? you know, the manager and whomever and say, how do we get you here and what's it gonna take? You know, and that that's not really a public discussion in in my view. I I felt that businesses are very weary coming to public meetings and talking about things, you know, about their business model and those kind of things. But, you know, talking to one or two members of the council, so you don't have a quorum or or the chair or president, I'm sorry, and the manager is a way to sit down businesses. And then obviously, if you start the development thing, then you gotta include other people. But people, businesses are just literally to come to a public meeting and flirt it out. So.
Okay.
Other goals beyond that. So what do we got? Economic development? We got facilities. Sounds like your finances are in good shape. So that goal is just to maintain steady she goes, basically, right? If you have a good finance director, you have a good.
Can you talk about, because this is from ten years ago? At that initial meeting, you talked about the fact that you were town administrator in the, you know, council. So I think the council set a policy at that point about how to use their stabilization. Now, since then, we've created a stabilization and through the budget resolution process, we've built up a substantial, up to up to our goal of debt. But it's an unwritten goal and it's an.
So you don't have finance, written finance policies?
Yeah, we don't have a policy. That's one of the reasons I told you that, you know, one of the things I wanted to get accomplished. But but it sounded like back then that Franklin had a written policy about how to use these stabilization accounts.
That's correct.
Because you told us at that point, it was something like, never let it drop below five million dollars, even if you have to cut policemen.
And they stuck to that.
Yeah.
I can't speak of the COVID year, but until our retirement, so we had a goal of it was five percent of revenues, not counting enterprise accounts, those kind of things. And our budget, general fund budget back there was maybe ninety, it was a hundred and twenty million when I left. And there was over thirty six million dollars, and we cut jobs. Because the council said we need, you know, and, you know, if they had to take a couple hundred grand out once, you know, for something to fill a gap, but, you know, once you empty your stabilization, you're just taking a jail into financial disaster. You know, unless you know the revenues are gonna rebound some other way. So, yeah, we had a written, we had a written policy on, you know, hotel tax and, you know, what what our enterprise retained earnings was gonna be. You know, we wanted twenty percent retained earnings on all water sewer and our, we have a trash fee. So we had written policies on all our financial, you know, stuff. And they're policies. They're not bylaws, regulations, ordinance. So anything that came out of the usual, you you had, it was a guiding principle, basically. So, yeah, we had those. I I'm sorry, you must have those.
Well, we do, we have some.
Yeah, we do. We do maintain ten ten percent in our stabilization, ten percent of our general fund budget. And that's that's written. We'll keep doing that.
Right. So we had a, we had a policy on debt. We always wanted to have debt. Because once you gave up debt, someone else took that money.
Right, right.
Like the school, you know, so if we wanted to keep, you know, debt between three and five percent of the general fund budget and we paid off a building, we'd go borrow the money and do something else. Because we didn't want to, okay, gee, hit the school. They they could spend the hundred and twenty million all by themselves.
Right.
And so we wanted to always have, most people want to pay off their mortgage, but we are the landowner in perpetuity. So we wanted to reinvest in facilities and roads and other things and not let that, you know, because you know this business, every department head, just give me three more people, just give me three more people. And also all the problems, and then four more years. Just give me three more now. The 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 internal pressure is relentless from the state, because they really want to do a good job.
Yeah.
They're not, there's no malice, but you start funding three more people at a hundred grand a person with benefits. That's three hundred grand you don't have for debt. So that was our philosophy.
Yeah, so I I was asking more in the in the terms of use of stabilization. So last year, I wasn't on the council for the last question cycle last year. But there was a need to take one point six from stabilization, so stabilization's like six million. It's crisis, right? But there was no policy written about how much of a chunk. So in my in my mind, when we talk about recession, which can be a a three, four year event, you can't be taking a million and a half each from your stabilization, or you're gonna have nothing left for year five, you know?
And then you're gonna have a five million dollar debt.
Then you have a deficit.
So.
So is this a goal that you're you're asking?
Well, yeah, I'm I'm trying to formally, like, like.
I just don't, I'm only asking so I don't want to get off track.
Yeah, it's a goal, yeah.
Okay.
Financial policy.
Financial policy.
For the stabilization specifically, or just a general review of all of them?
Well, a general review of all of them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
While you're here, you might as well look at all of them and get a consensus from the council.
Did you ever put?
Those can raise.
That's one of the three things I had on list that I wanted to accomplish when I came back.
Okay.
So, by the way, congratulations on your host agreements.
Yeah.
You know, Franklin's gonna take in over nine million dollars in everyone a host agreements. Do you have a policy about where that money's going?
No, because those were all done just as I was leaving.
Yeah.
And some of them had, actually hadn't kicked in. So Neta, we were early adopter because of the vote of the citizens of both elections. We were, we, within a month after the medical marijuana, we rezoned all of our industrial land for medical marijuana. We created a zone, not in the downtown. And and when recreation marijuana came in, we took the same zone. So you, we can, you can have recreation marijuana in Franklin, but it can't be in downtown. It has to be in an industrial area. Because we wanted to start slow, to see if there was any negative effect on the new law. And with Neta, who's a huge, well, now they've got sold out. They they bought a sixty or seventy thousand square foot empty warehouse for a growth facility. And we made a deal. It's three hundred grand a year. And then, and then they went, they went into retail and then plus we went three percent over ten million. Ten million, that's nothing. And then we we duplicated that for each other person, because we had, hey, you want to meet the same standard? Now, whether that three hundred grand's only for five years, we'll see what the, I'm guessing the legislature's gonna new, 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 after the five years is up for everybody, because it's been such a kickback. Because you saw what happened in Fall River and some other communities. Buy me a fire truck, you know?
It's extortion.
What?
It's extortion.
Yeah. Ugly word, but. Yeah, so we had.
This is becoming a diversity issue.
So some of it was gonna go to the school for, if I remember right, part of it was gonna go to the school for education about drugs and alcohol and a program for that. There was no police impact on, we never had a police call once on those facilities. The security is so unbelievable. It's like Fort Knox. And then part of it was gonna go into capital improvements, because it wasn't something we had. So, but I don't know what happened. I've been gone two years. You couldn't find out from the current manager what's going on. So, but that was the the council wanted that. They wanted the revenue. Franklin, in my tenure at Franklin Council, first for, first and always was economic development. Keep the taxes low by attracting business. We made a lot of tips, tax increment and financing. Nowhere, someone has to come in and put a manufacturing plant, bring a hundred and fifty jobs. It's like a no brainer. Give you a tax break. Ten years goes by like that, and we got all those jobs.
So shifting off of marijuana.
Yep. You wanna get to heroin? Go ahead.
So I I don't know how to word the goal properly, but for me, I guess in my mind, maybe, Michael, you can help with the exact verbiage. But to go back to, I would like to, as a goal, be able in a timely fashion, by the end of this year, come back to the council with a proposed fire building plan. So I know we're like sort of in a schematic phase right now, so making sure that that comes back to the council again for presentation and either about up or down for the next phase.
Are you replacing one or adding one?
Replacing.
Okay.
And I would say that, you know, just as part of that, the the movement of the old fire station is part of sort of revitalization of downtown.
Yeah, ties in.
So it's kind of tied into what we'd be able to then do downtown. So it's kind of like a double whammy. And then, given the financial.
So your fire station downtown?
Yeah.
So the fire station plays into a lot, because the fire station is downtown, it's in the middle of our opportunity zone. It is a crumbling building, and every time the fire engines pull out, they go the wrong way around Central Square.
Franklin downtown was one way.
Right.
So if the fire was over there, the fire truck had to go that way.
Oh, no, our fire truck goes.
We shut down, we shut down.
So we made everything two ways with our change in our downtown, so we got rid of that issue. But, so the old, the new fire station wouldn't, it would go someplace.
New fire station would go further out.
And is the building worth saving?
No.
Okay.
It's right next to our empty, our empty town hall, which we're looking to repurpose, so.
Potentially build.
Or do economic development, maybe.
Right.
Okay, cool. All right. Who's got other ideas?
So I want to throw out a goal.
Yep. He's gonna make a list, and I I assume you'll bring it to the council for a meeting and vote on all these.
Well, for me, and as you just mentioned, as, you know, Franklin's priority was to bring in business. You know, we've always, you know, many councils, including myself, said that's what we want to do in Bridgewater. I'm afraid we don't have the infrastructure in many areas.
Like sewer or water?
Exactly. Extending down, you know, Route eighteen, which is a big area that we have. What did Franklin do? Did they build their own infrastructure? Do they have these companies come in and add infrastructure when they?
So we were, no, no. So we had two planned industrial parks. One was built completely by national development, and we made a deal with them. They also built the train, a new train station so the T could extend out farther. And the other industrial park was done by a private entity firm. We have a four million square foot EMC building. And so the the big industrial parks were done by, we don't have infrastructure issues in terms of water and sewer. They were extended into all of Franklin. But what we would do is, you know, we're we're on Route one forty. We'd rezon residential to industrial. Or on other places, we would make it commercial. So, because there were three houses left holding up the whole thing. And whether they liked it or not, the people come, don't do it in their house, because, hey, we gotta think of everybody here, sorry. It was a tough vote, but.
Right.
So they didn't have infrastructure issues.
Can I add to your goal on infrastructure, when you talk about specifically South on eighteen? My understanding and what I've heard from business owners, people who have property, is, Michael, might be able to help with this as well, is that we need sewerage, right? Because a lot of the land is wet, not purple, but could be built. And I've heard for years that the prisons has its own wastewater treatment facility that also dumps into the same river. So if our wastewater treatment facility is is at its max capacity, a goal in my mind would be to ask the process of working with the state to tie into the prison's sewer treatment plant that's under capacity.
Right.
Because a lot of the facilities have closed since that facility was built. We could then tie in sewer to the south business, business district of Route eighteen. But it not have to be connected to the town sewer, which is maxed out, which then would spur development.
So do you have vacant land?
Yes.
So are they big parcels or little parcels?
There's one big parcel at.
There's some bigger ones, but again, there's different questions on wetland and stuff like that. How much of it's buildable?
There's a lot of, like, I know one property, a friend of mine owns fifteen acres, and he's got upland of maybe an acre.
So there's some some questions as far as what is completely buildable. And that was part of the the master plan, you know, what are the buildable areas of the town? What could we go out and market?
If you have enough land, you can do a package treatment plant. It was its own, you know, you put up a giant office building or warehouse, and then you create your own package treatment plant. If you have a lot of wetlands, forget that.
Well, I guess that would be the other thing is, you know, again, like, hearing complaints from residents about what downtown looks like and the project that has not come to be, is people say, I don't understand why we don't develop Route eighteen south. And I have to say, well, you know, it, there's a sewer issue. We can't tie in the town sewer. But maybe we could understand that it's not developable with the land, and we can start.
Well, it's a combination of a few issues, like, again, it's, you know, a private line went from where the truck open pit used to be up to Winter Place, water similarly, you know? It's, it it needs to be redone from a certain level back, but I know we're, you know, in the process of improving our our sewer treatment facility too. But again, this is just, I I think infrastructure as a whole in the town needs to be looked at. Where can we, where can we improve in areas that we want to, you know, build businesses on? Can we earmark funds to start that process? So then, at that point in time, once infrastructure's in place, then we can go out and market to certain businesses. We don't have the corridors like Rainham has in forty four or one thirty eight, you know, we have the, you know, eighteen. But a lot of our areas, like one oh six, one oh four, are mixing with residential. And this is kind of, as you mentioned, you know.
A political nightmare.
You had, you had residential, you converted to to industrial. Well, we had industrial, where we allowed some residential. So we want to put other industrial based stuff in that area, and now we've got residents all on up and arms. So we've got some issues in that regard.
Do you have any sense that anybody that's looked to come to Bridgewater from commercial or industrial aspect, that infrastructure was an issue?
If anything else we wanted to do further down beyond Winter Place, you know, needs to have infrastructure. Are you, you know, are you gonna have mom and pop places with with title five humps in the front of their their properties? So that's definitely a fact. You're not gonna attract any big box store, and that gets into density once again. And we have conversations here with, you know, right here, okay, we're bothering the density of all the residents that we're doing here. Now let's see some business come into this area. A truck could do their big box store anywhere.
Right, you know, it's.
The way the world's going.
Well, we, we. These are secondary competitive grocery stores. We have one right now that's a monopoly in town. We have surrounding communities that have grocery stores, but the town of Bridgewater can use a second grocery store by all means. But it's definitely, again, a lot about, you know, as we talked about earlier, density in certain areas. But I think also, I think infrastructure certainly needs to be analyzed. We think there's a lot of areas in town where we do have older water pipes. So I hear a lot of people complaining about rust in their waters when hydrants are flushed and things of that nature. So I think an assessment of our town's infrastructure needs to be looked at and 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 figure out the areas of greatest need and then where we can piggyback possible business development.
You want to talk about water master plan?
Is there one?
Yeah, there, we've got a pipe replacement program. Got a pipe replacement program, and we're actually now going through a process with all our sewer, water lines, drainage and pavement management and sidewalks.
Oh, cool.
Priority plan.
So.
And that's exactly.
Can I, can we add a goal in on this? So one of the things, just as I'm hearing all of the different ideas, and I would love as a goal for us to actually decide which of the ideas we need. Can we just create a goal that says, you know, these are the four projects we want to put forth this year? So for me, a goal would be a plan that we've all approved or agreed to or support.
I think we have.
We have a meeting like.
Picks it, these are hanging fruit. I think that's where we have to, you know, spitball all these ideas and just grab the lowest hanging fruit and try and get those things accomplished.
And so, and I guess in my mind, I think if we say our goal is, I don't know, let's say by September first, we want to, we want to know what that list is and have had all the discussions.
I think you need another meeting.
Take more actions, yeah.
And I think step one is getting everyone in hand, the master plan that's been created. Let's review that as a group. Let's look at the different topics that's in that plan. All right, what, you know, pick a goal with each group or pick a a group and then great goals from that group. I think that's the necessary step that needs to take place as a council to get some goals going.
I was certainly hoping tonight we would have roughly, you know, ballpark twenty ideas of of things. And then we would narrow those down and then we would associate.
Five.
Boss, boss from those. And then decide as a council, you know, these will be the goals of the council, and we've supplied the funding for that.
Does other people have, so?
I have two others.
Good.
So one of the things I've also heard is is community engagement. I think since I've heard, since I've started, I've heard two things, right? The community, I think, doesn't feel involved or doesn't, isn't aware of what's happening in town. And I've heard that version does the website. I've heard that version does, nobody attends meetings. And then I've also heard that participation is low. And and that that nobody here, you know, thinks that that's a good thing. Everyone's trying to get it up. So I I would actually like to try to take both of those things on as goals, right? Let's, what is the measurement of participation? And what can we do to like make that better?
I don't know.
And then the other one is, you know, the the community engagement, you know, how do we know? And then the other one is, you know, the, the community engagement, you know, how do we know that we're better than we were last year? And what steps are we taking this year to drive everyone?
They certainly get involved when we try to introduce a new business idea. They all say no.
I don't know if that's newer people, the old guard.
But I, I think, you know, in my mind, maybe that means we figure out another way, like a special meeting on it.
Oh, you're gonna have them at a gold meeting.
Yeah.
Just the big stuff. Now you're gonna have to.
But that's what I'm saying. Like if we've said that's a priority, then.
Probably about ten ideas I'm gonna do it.
So one thing that might help, and I know you've been in town basically all your life, right?
So far.
But you feel like you really know the town, right? So, so like collectively, does everyone know where our industrial sites are? How big they are? What's sitting on them? Does everybody understand the problem that, that's on Bedford Street with the orange sewer line and the wetlands that they're? Does everybody understand that we'll never get a target because there's, there's three targets within eleven miles? They're never putting a target here. And, and so I, I think that when we look at the bigger, bigger area, and I'm not just focused on my district, I, I look at the entire picture, right? But I, I see challenges, like we have a challenge that I, I can talk, I can say it here because I, I made them come before the planning board and now it's public information. There's a developer trying to take an industrial site and turn it into a hundred fifty yard park.
Forty B?
No.
Oh, they need a rezone?
Yeah. So there's a long story behind that. We need alcohol. We don't have to get. Right? So, so everyone at the table, you know, as we go through, needs to look at the master plan, needs to look at the zoning map, needs to understand the, the infrastructure problems of the different areas. We did a great job, I think, on the, on the diff around street and has become very fruitful. You know, but as, as Kevin said, there's also a bunch of houses there. So it's smacked down in the middle of the industrial zone. And so we're gonna run out of plots that can be industrial in the industrial zone, right?
Yeah, that's what happens.
We did a zoning change last year down the street here to make, make this business zone instead of industrial to try to attract more business oriented without making them. But I, I find myself, and I encourage everybody to kind of look at all the pieces, because when, when I hear there's a hundred forty-six plots in industrial land and I ask the question, well, where are they, you know, available? You know, I'm still looking for a response. You know, that's our limitation. Limitation is the four inch sewer line that only goes down to Larry Silver's place. The limitation is how much industrial.
And how long is that?
Larry Silver, that's a lot.
So, so when you go south on, on Bedford Street from the center of town and you run into the, uh, the ice rink there.
Yeah.
They ran sewer down for that development there. And I think fireworks circle. I don't remember fireworks circles before or after.
Before.
And then beyond that is a smaller line that's run down a little bit. But it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not gonna handle any capacity. This, the owner of this building ran the sewer down this to get to the point where he could develop this entire, entire park. So he took on that financial responsibility.
Yeah, but.
Many years ago.
He must have seen payback.
Oh, yeah.
And he had, he had a critical mass of property.
Right, that's correct. Yeah, you need to know.
Right. So none of this stuff can happen in the abstract. You have, you gotta look across all the parcels that are, you know, the six by six Bridgewater. Right. Know where, where everything sits.
So what are you supporting as a goal? Is infrastructure plan or idea?
I think we need to understand the weakness in the infrastructure because we can't talk about new development on, on Bedford Street on anything or even trying to encourage it unless we know the, what's under the road and how we would plan to improve it, whether it's tie into the prison or do self, self, whatever the term was, or extend the sewer down there. And then, but I think we really need to understand if we're gonna make that investment, you know, what do, what can we attract? And that's where we work with, with the software that we have because if we invest two million dollars running sewer down the road, will people show up to use it?
Will they come?
It's an Elm Street scenario.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I mean, it sounds like you're working on your current water sewer, you know, stuff. So one of the most popular things ever done in Franklin is we, when I arrived there, the town had gone from twenty to thirty thousand people. The raw sewage was in the ball field. And, and the water, so the council voted to a very aggressive I N I in, uh, program to, um, take fresh water out of the sewer system because we were at capacity. And we took out six hundred thousand gallons a day just by fixing the leaky pipes. Okay, six hundred thousand gallons, which was going in the sewer treatment plant that we were treating clean water. So when you look at infrastructure.
Easy infrastructure.
Right? So, and then, um, we invested really heavily in our water system. But people didn't mind the rate increase because when you get a new water line, you get a brand new street. Paid for out of the water rates. And was it because the water, we have, do you have an enterprise account? Yeah, because the enterprise account ruined the street. We paid to fix it. People could kill us without the water line. But they loved the new street.
Love the new street.
Oh, my God. We did subdivision after subdivision over and over and over. And because we're a heavy stormwater community, I don't know if you have any consent, but we would, a lot of subdivisions had thirty-two foot streets, you know, we would shrink the streets. Make them twenty, make them twenty-six. It didn't cost us as much. We, we're, we're a hundred percent groundwater community, more, more, more infiltration, groundwater infiltration. If you have the less previous material, we'd get rid of one sidewalk because no one in a subdivision even walks on a sidewalk. So we, we did a very aggressive things to save money, but get people to streets. You might, I don't know if you do that, but it's just something to think about. But water rate had to go up. But.
Only had to be down to down to.
Yeah. So anyway, just thought, other ideas you want to get on the list?
I have another one.
Good.
I don't, maybe this happens in a different way, but one of the other things I'm learning and maybe observing is when goals are set in here, it's not entirely clear to me how they get communicated to all the different departments.
No, no, no. You're not getting set here.
I understand that. It's set by this group.
You gotta.
I, I'm not having that. I'm, I understand that. A goal is set. How do you get the entire town, the people who make decisions in the boards, make decisions in the daily actions? How do you get them all to know that same goal and hear that message in the same way?
You send it to the board?
That's Michael Strub.
Yeah, it's Michael Strub. He has to make it happen.
Yeah, right.
But it's given to it best, which is I wanna get to Foxwoods. I tell the driver I wanna get to Foxwoods. I don't care how he goes. If I get to Foxwoods, it's a success.
Right. So maybe that's the answer, but I am, I am worried that not everybody hears the same message in the same way, including us. And I think in any game of telephone, you know, there's, there's filtering, there's everything. So, so for me, a goal would be a venue, a way that, that everyone in the town who takes action on the ideas hears about it at the same time. Here's the same message in the same way from someone. And, and I think it's, you know, I imagine, let's say we come out of here with the five things. One way we could do it is give it to you and then you give it to them. And the other way is we as a committee could have a meeting and, and share this with our voice to, to.
Yeah.
So that's as a goal for me. I'd love to find ways to have a single conversation around like the really important, not everything.
So I think the biggest challenge, you know, that I have is articulating the goals to mostly committees. I mean, I, no problem for the most part articulating to staff for the most part. But it's, it's really articulating the council goals to boards and committees. And, you know, that's, I think that's the hard part because boards and committees are citizen volunteers and you know, they've, they've historically just figured, well, I'm on this board. I've got a vote and I'll vote.
They're not accountable to you.
Exactly.
That's what I'm thinking.
Nor the council for that matter.
Yeah. But if they have a question, I don't know. I was just thinking that there is, if we figure out a way to have.
You invite them to the table. If they don't show up the table.
That's different.
Shame on them.
But I just.
It's on the front page of your webpage. Here's the goals. Here's the five, not forty goals. Here's the, here's the top five priorities. You have him send letters. You, you multi, um, social media outreach to these people, but you can't force them to listen.
I agree. I think just an ask would be find a way for common alignment, single message, single Q and A. Press everyone. Can't, can't make them.
Bring them to the council meeting.
We need to continue doing what we started last year, which I suggested to Michael, we invite all the committees in, you know, one per meeting to give a presentation. It gives us a chance to have a dialogue with.
I guess my, my fear and again, I'm sorry, this is correct. Just everything seems so hub and spoke. So one group comes in, presents us, next group comes in, maybe there was something in common. They don't know about it. One's pushing A, the other's pushing B. If we had just all said, hey, it's A, this year it's A, next year it's B, this year it's A. Does anybody have questions on A? I, I wonder if, if that just sort of removes the questions. You don't have to field them. We can answer them. I don't know.
Well, we've had joint meetings before, whether it be with the town council and school committee to go over those particular issues. I think we've met with other different groups before. And again, if there's any particular project, I imagine we could bring two or three different groups in. We've done it before as a council and, and had that conversation and that sometimes done. So.
But maybe like, so using as an example, like revitalizing downtown, like everyone is gonna have a role. Everyone needs to know. We, we are driving that. Like we want to get that thing done. And a, a single meeting where everyone comes together and hears that and hears the reasons and hears about the pipes that keep down the work and all that stuff. I don't know.
But the boards have certain autonomy.
Yeah. Huge. They can make whatever decision they want with that information. I just hearing it.
So I, I agree a hundred percent, but at the end of the day, you say boards. You guys control all the rules here. You're not the conservation commission. I get that. You know, there's only board of appeals, but you are the zoning guys. You are the budget guys. You're the leaders of the community.
I now through experience disagree with you.
Why?
Cause we can't, we can suggest, but we can't force a board to believe in a particular rule that's set on paper.
Like a zoning rule?
Yeah, sure. If it says special permit, they get to make up whatever, whatever decision.
Yeah, but you get to decide if it's a special permit. When you make the.
Everything's a special permit.
But that's on the council.
Yeah.
You make the rules. You get the recommendations from everybody and then you decide what's in the best interest. Yeah. If something's a special permit, now you get, somebody else gets to make the decision. You're right. I agree with you a hundred percent.
So if, if you did, if, so what you're saying is if, if you sit down in another workshop setting, we come up with the, say, four or five priorities, we'll call them priorities. And once those are set by this group, then communicating those four or five priorities to all the boards and committees. I mean, some are, are irrelevant to the priorities that you're gonna set, but the ones that really are, you know, have a stake in those and just at least sit down and articulate why those are priorities and what they really mean.
I would, and the other thing I would say is the ones that aren't relevant to the goals aren't a priority. Like that is part of the message. Like this year it's not that, it's this. So that's, that's where I think for me, there's no alignment. Yeah, just get everyone to, and, and if someone has a question, they ask a question. You know, they, they do what they're gonna do with that information, but at least.
Want some continuity across the board.
Yeah. And I can imagine, I'm not making this up, but you do that twice a year. We set the goal and then we do like a media check-in. How are we doing? What are the milestones? You know, are we, yeah, are we getting that? People can ask questions again. Hey, I thought it was this.
I think it's. You, you're, it's critical and I think you guys are on the right path. You're the leaders of the community. You need to lead. And what you're talking about is leadership. Here's our priorities. We're explaining that to everybody. And we're gonna move ahead with those. And that shows leadership. And those aren't the easy things. These are on the tough things. And then the more communication you have and the more vision you show, the better you're gonna be positioned on the tough issues.
I think, but that's a cha, that's a mind shift change. And I think that especially staff is, for your purposes, is probably irrelevant. But I think for some of the boards and committees and the members on some of those boards and committees, that's gonna be a hard, a hard shift in thinking. Which is fine, which is, but I think, I think given, you know, the form of government we have now, which we all still call a new form of government. Well, I guess relative to three hundred and fifty years it is. But, you know, with a new form of government, I think it's, it's time to sort of take that leap. You know, because that's ultimately, that Jeff was right. I mean, this is, you're the council, you're the elected leaders. And it, there's nothing wrong with saying here are our priorities for the town over the next year or whatever timeframe.
Yeah.
But I think, but I, I do think that you'll get a little bit of pushback.
I mean, I think, you know, look at the downtown project. I mean, there, there are different people setting different policies for the town. And, and I don't know that that would stop, but I think at least we have the opportunity to, to say, this is what, this is what we're trying to do. The more credible our leadership is, the more likely people will be. People will follow it, right?
So we need to show good diligence and that we've really thought about things and we've heard everybody.
And you do it two, three, four, five years in a row and then it's the new norm. Okay. It's not the three hundred and fifty years of history. It's the new norm. This is the council leads the community. And then maybe people want to get more involved because it's making a, a difference that, you know, everybody can see.
Well, the oil machine is easier to operate.
Right.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel because that's what people are probably afraid of. They get on, well, I gotta reinvent the wheel. I don't have that kind of time. I don't have that kind of effort.
People want to be high with something that accomplishes things. And you are in a great position to start that. What else?
Fred's hold on the last ten priorities.
I mean, to me, to me, if, you know, between now and when you actually do this, if some other good idea rises to the occasion, that I'd be able to get on the table.
So, um, I run a discussion group, which I usually pose an inconvenient question about once a week. And then there's a lot of, depends on what the topic is. There's a lot of commentary, right? So I usually try to avoid any discussion myself. I just throw the question out there. So outside of this group, I think I can fairly say that there's probably three main goals that people are interested in. One is bringing more business to Bridgewater. I think that goal though, people don't understand what that really means or how to qualify that.
It's simple.
Right. But here's, so I, I took a friend down to Black Hat Brewery where we were chatting for a while. And we were headed, we're having a, um, a controversial conversation. And I said, okay, so let's take this, not this, but we were at the brewery. I said, what do you think this brings to the town of Bridgewater in terms of revenue? And so I started walking through all the different pieces. And it turned out that the three hot dogs that we ate was the total contribution of our meal. So it brought three cents to the town of Bridgewater. The beers we drank didn't do it.
Right.
The rent that he, that the establishment didn't do it. The building pays rent, it pays taxes.
Commercial tax.
But it doesn't matter what's in that space. So when you look at a vacant space, it looks bad. You know, and people say, well, we need more business. And, and so some of the downtown revitalization, which is number two, is more a feel-good thing than bottom line thing.
Right.
Right? Because yeah, we can maybe make more efficient traffic or more efficient parking or bring in more boutique shops. But to the bottom line, it really doesn't travel. So when we're setting up priorities, some of those have to be intangible priorities.
The, the biggest, Latin, a huge misunderstanding is how commercial and industrial taxes work. Cause everybody thinks their home tax is based on value.
Right.
Is how commercial, industrial, which is really based on rent, right? And people don't understand that. So you have a brand new building, a commercial building and it goes vacant. You're still gonna get ninety-five percent of the, the taxes, whether it's full or empty. But, but, but people don't understand all that. So you're right. The, the guy that's, the, the property owner is paying the property tax on the brewery, whether it's a brewery or.
Yeah.
It doesn't, so the meals tax is the only thing that brings it money or the trickle down effect because you have a opportunity to go next door and do something else.
Right.
Or if you're, you're paying good wages and citizens who bring, you know, good jobs.
Is it dance studio with little kids? I don't.
Well, the kids are dancing and the parents run the brewery.
And number three, where it's always about the college. And it's always about, you know, how can we get to college to give us five million dollars? How can we get rid of the college? But no one understands the college is actually for the most part a profit center to the town of Bridgewater because the ambulance runs down. But it's those top three things and.
During COVID.
Yeah.
No one was there, right? No one was there, right?
And no traffic.
Nobody called the ambulance.
But I don't know how to set goals on those three items that are important to people.
I can't speak to the university. Do you have a town ground, town gown committee? Do people get along? It's just that they want some, they want, they want a.
I think one of the goals.
They want cash.
Good luck. Go ask the Catholic Church, or the Protestant Church, or any other church, good luck, okay?
But I could feed off of that goal, you know, it's developed a relationship between the town and the university. And to your point, a lot of people don't realize residents, the economic impact that the university has, not only as an employer, but it's supplying, you know, the customers to pizza shops, to liquor stores. So a goal could be something similar that they did, I don't know if you remember about ten years ago, where they put a really nice booklet together, all color, and it really was like a highlight of, you know, not only the money that they've donated.
The university did it?
Yeah, but all the projects and the things that they've done for the town.
They'll do it again.
Whether it's buying equipment or whatever, so I still think that if that is a problem, then we revisit that, and one of the goals could be, we engage the university on this idea, let's update that, it's been about ten years.
I always refer to that.
That's a great idea.
So, you know, maybe that's a way.
Took their horn, yeah.
Could we extend that to be a town newsletter, so it's not just the college, it's.
How many local employees?
So really what you want is, it was probably the economic impact of the university, and you want it updated because it's old.
And some of it was nice, it was book club, it was what they do with our senior citizens and taking them trips and meals they provide, and, you know, scholarships that they give to the high school every year, thousand-dollar scholarships for twenty-five students. So it was, it was a group of that, public safety improvements, you know, so maybe it's time.
That's a great idea.
But it would help with that mindset, that idea all the time too, I would say that's another one, that the college doesn't do enough. Well, if it dried up, it would be six hundred homes, so what do you want?
Well, we're a universe, you know, you have university towns, and then you have towns that have universities in them.
Right.
We're a town that has a university in it.
Okay, right. Well, that was my question too, Jeff, so back to Franklin, what was, you know, the town's relationship with Dean?
So the administration had a great relationship, the, the politics was, some of the councils were always beating them up. But just like you have said, right, they bring in kids from all over the world, never mind, right? And they spend money, their property is immaculate, they give, every town employee can go to their school for free, take classes for free, they let senior citizens go for free, they gave us their parking lot for our library. I mean, they're, just like you, there's a long, long list, but no one knows them. And the only reason the council beat them up, because they wanted a pilot. And the president of the council said, I am happy to give you a pilot, as soon as you go ask the YMCA, every religious organization in town, and every other nonprofit in town, I'll, I'll match or beat everyone, good luck. And of course, that's not gonna happen, why are you picking on me? I'm already bringing kids from Asia, New York City, et cetera, et cetera. It was a huge asset. It was a hidden asset.
Well, another asset is bringing an educated workforce. You know, if we could partly take advantage of these kids with these, it's a pretty serious science building we've got there.
Yeah.
Tremendous, you know, it's a purpose, perfect place for some bio startup to.
But I think if you approach the president and say, can you update this for us? What, what are they gonna say? No?
They've actually been updating it, and that's, that's part of the problem too, is that we don't see the update.
I think when they did that one ten years, I think that was sent to all the homes in Bridgewater.
They updated, the president comes to the council, makes a presentation.
We've never had the president come to it.
Why not?
It's been a while, we.
For years.
Maybe somebody else, okay?
Yeah, so we've had, we've had different people.
We have representatives from.
Well, they update the document they present to you. It's marketing.
I think at the time, they were trying to close Pock out into a pedestrian hall, that was the, that was.
Okay, what else, what else we got on the list?
Well, one other thing that's, you know, and it's a conversation we've had for years going back when I was on the council before is the permitting process, you know, we, I think at one point in time, we were coming up with a booklet to help someone new coming into town on the steps, what it needs to, you know, to kind of do to, to get what they needed in place to build a business or to do something with their home. I don't know if that's still in place, because I know recently, just as a homeowner trying to build a new deck in my house, I had to jump through hoops. So it's something that I like to, us to look at and revisit as far as the smoothness of, whether it's a residential application or a commercial application, but I think in order for the town to continue to grow and develop, we have to have a smooth process.
So I'm curious about the home issue, you just didn't go to the building commissioner or?
Oh, no, it was, it was difficulties going through the building department.
I had a similar event, because I got yelled at for not getting an inspection that's not listed in the building plan.
I mean, I just, I just think it varies on the, on the project, it varies with who you're talking to.
So, so a couple of things, that's a customer service issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, on a homeowner basis, you're not talking about commercial development, which is really complicated.
Well, right.
On a homeowner, that's a customer service issue.
Okay, but again, this is also, we're gonna finish what you're saying.
So where I worked, every Wednesday, unless it was a holiday or something, the town administrator, we had an in-house town attorney three days a week. The building commissioner, the planning person, the board of health, the fire chief, the town engineer, we would meet every Wednesday to review any commercial industrial application prior to going to any committee. We would, we would smooth the way for them to get in front of the planning board as quick as they can, or the zoning board, by saying, you missed this on the plan, where you're gonna put your dumpster, where the lighting is filling over on the neighbor's property. We, as the staff, would smooth the way, we didn't guarantee a yes, but time is money to a developer. So if you can, if you can avoid two extra trips to the planning board because you've set that person up to succeed, they love it.
Right, and I think this is kind of part of what's happened to our Broad Street project.
So we have, we have, that was my committee, because I was, it wasn't a public meeting either, because it was only staff, and, and all the players that, you know, and the fire chief, look, I need four more feet to get the fire truck around here. This, you know, this building, and the, and the town engineer, come see me, because I'll give you all our rules about impervious coverage. So it really, they loved it, right?
I think this, so we, I think we as a town are doing that, I think the transition and the pickup here happens is when it's a homeowner trying to do something.
Well, then it has to be customer service.
Then it goes back to a customer service point, so to try to, without bashing up, you know, our personal experiences that we've talked about, I'm quite upset the way I've been treated personally and how the process has gone for me, I'm waiting for it to conclude. But the goal would be customer service, right? So we have to find ways of engaging the town employees in some sort of customer service model or training to understand that it's supposed to be a process that we're guided through if we don't know, because we're a homeowner and not somebody that's in the business. Because the person that's in the business is getting, is getting their handheld, and they know the business. I don't know the business, and I'm being told good luck.
Right.
We'll let you know when you screw it up.
Continuity between residential and commercial, but like you were just saying, getting all the parties that be to look at the project and say, this is what needs to happen. I just, I don't know if that's happening right now, because I think Broad Street project, how many years has it been in development? It's just taken so many, so many years, so many hoops. It's gotta get back to this committee, it's gotta get forward to this committee, it's gotta be reviewed again, and, you know.
So maybe that is our problem.
I, I think that the whole process needs to be looked at, and whether, you know, as he's mentioned, we get all these department heads together. And I'm not, you know, again, I'm spitballing here, I'm not sure how much Michael's meeting with the different department heads as a group or individually, maybe there's a better way to do it, to make the process of, of commercial development and things of that go, go smoother. And that's just one of the goals I'd like to, you know, look at and review.
I think that drives so many other issues that we have, that, you know, at least for me, if we were taking a vote, it would rise to the top, because it seems like, you know, it could have an impact in different areas.
It has a strong, strong impact, it trickles down to everything that you wanna do.
Customer service is a management issue.
I guess that, that part of it, on the residential side.
The other part, on the residential side, that's a customer, but that's. The other one is how you, how you guys are, Michael wants to handle the big stuff.
Right, right.
And what's the best way to handle it.
Right, and I, you know, I know we've talked about this for years, I just don't know where that's.
I would say he should come, if you, if it's a priority, let him develop the plan to present to you.
So I think one of the things I'm interested in is, I feel like we have no visibility into how many people had a bad experience, how many people had a good one? How long does it take on average to like get a potable fix or get through? So for me, I mean, having some metrics dashboard that we look at, where we can, we can see the state of things in the town, not anecdotally, which we all, I think, that's what we use right now, it's like, who called us and what did we experience? Like, I wanna see something like, how long does it take for someone to get an issue with the town resolved? Is that better or worse? How many of those are over ninety days?
That's tough, though.
Everyone says that, but I can show you ten towns around here that have on their website metrics, right? So, I mean, it's doable, it's expensive, it requires process changes, but.
Well, some of that is really simple, others just is more cost more.
So that, that's where I would say, you know, those goals I completely support, but I think it's really hard to see if we hit them or not.
I mean, assuming, for instance, I don't know if you have, I mean, do you have a work order system like online?
Not publicly accessible.
So, you know, you want a potable fix, you email the DPW, and twenty-four hours later, the potable's fixed. But we have a work order system, it costs money.
And that's, so like, when I started, I said, well, what are the open issues for people in my district?
Right.
And we, we don't, for good reasons, you know, but we don't currently have any.
So you have to invest money to do what you want to do.
I think we've spoken about this before in terms of the website redesign and the need for a kind of, you know, self-service type of automated process for that, exactly that purpose, but we don't have that now.
So I think, I think it just, you know, to not get us too far, of course, but that's, that's our internal priority right now. And now that, now that we've set a DPW structure in place.
Now, we've just kind of formulated our DPW right now.
Oh, cool. Yeah, it's several years.
We did it well, we did it.
Four years ago, Michael and I started a conversation, a little booklet I used to bring to council meetings, say, Mike, are we working on this yet? That's the one you're talking about, four years ago. It's supposed to be, oh, I don't have it today.
It was the steps someone could take to get a permitting process, who would, they would need to.
So Mike and I met a number of times, Mike's a friend, it's all gonna be put on the system. They're not even gonna have to go downtown and do the paperwork. I, myself, a couple of years ago, went downtown to get a permit. The clerk says, Frank, here's a computer, it's all done on the computer, if you don't have one, come and use ours. But I'm here to do, it's on the computer.
No direction, no help.
It's on the computer, follow it, pull it up, I wanna build, I wanna put a deck on my house. Then it's supposed to tell you everything, you follow it, fill it all in and everything else. It's supposed to be there. It told me it was there, I filled it all out. If, if, if there's a failure in the system, then that's what has to be looked at. That's a problem we've worked on for four years, and I personally used it at their office and got a permit.
Did you ever try it at home, Frank?
I've only had one permit since then.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Stop pulling permits.
Worked when I got to seventy-three.
But that, I mean, that is, you know, that, that kind of, that kind of system, we've, we have a homegrown one that IT developed six, seven years ago for, for the highway department, and we're gonna, you know, we've used it, and they use it religiously, but we're gonna do a public, you know, a much more publicly accessible one. And I'll be very blunt, when I first got here, that was sort of one of my goals, was to implement, you know, reporting mechanism software. And as soon as I figured out what we really had, I said, we're not gonna do that, because we're not, we're gonna fail miserably. We're, it's gonna be fifty days, you know, before we, we really can address a lot of these problems that people are gonna have. So we're in a much better place now, so I think, I think we're ready, especially with a DPW, where there's a structure, there's somebody in charge, we can, we can manage it.
So all of that really is a budget issue, at the end of the day, you need the technology.
But I think it's also a goal, like.
No, but I'm saying, if you're gonna have this goal, you gotta put your money where your mouth is. That, that's, you know, if you're gonna have, you know, we have, you know, work order thing, we have a facility thing, we have inventory, we pay the company, we have every single motor and blower and everything by serial number and age in our system for preventive maintenance. So we know that the air conditioner on the school, Unit Three, is gonna wear out in six years, so now we have to start thinking about it. That all costs money, so if you're willing to put the money, you have to, you can solve the problem.
And you can play for it.
And you can play for it, but you need the tech, the software to do it, so if that's a goal, you put it on, but then you gotta fund it.
I would suggest that.
Well, you could put it as a goal. You can do, you, you put in a goal between now and the budget, you can do research on what kind you want and how much it costs, and what, what, do you need an extra half a staff, or who's gonna do it, and.
Because otherwise, I just, I don't know how you know that you're getting better, or what's actually bad, right? And so there's a great Memphis data, it's the city of Memphis, and they have money and they're invested, so it's like the Rolls Royce, right? But you go on there, and you can see the things that they have, whether they're better or worse. There's probably some scaled-down version of that, the three things we care about, or get started, dip our toe in, try it. I'd like to see that.
So, I mean, in some things, so like a payment management plan has a matrix, it said, I wanna keep average at eighty. So five years later, you can say, oh, we had eighty, seventy, or ninety, right? How much money do you invest to meet your goal? So some of those things, you, it's in place to measure those kind of things. If you have a work order system, how many did we process in one year? And where were they, and did we do the same one four times? And so you can do all that.
And even, I mean, even less complicated, you know, we're talking about voter turnout. Has voter, what's voter turnout looking like over the last ten years? We have those numbers, we just, we don't ever like to look at that chart, or maybe.
It's not convenient to look at.
You have, you have to construct it, right?
Yeah.
What else? Is there anything we do about, like a quick list or a summary in the case, just so there's no confusion?
I put maintenance of assets, traffic, traffic circulation downtown, downtown revitalization.
Fire station?
Financial policies. I didn't hear fire station mentioned. Fire station, I didn't know, I don't know if marijuana was a goal, or do you just mention it as an example? It's always a golfer belt.
Could we add to that a goal, I don't know specifically what the goal might be, but I'll stop the conversation, diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, continued training for town employees, staff, policy development. I would certainly think that that would be one of our continued goals.
Yeah, I've heard that too. Do you have an A job person?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's good. Did you have anything else on that list? I like, we have, we do have one serious issue that has to be on the goal, I believe. We've talked about it, and talked about it, and that's all we do. Sidewalks are falling apart. I made that point in my three-to-five-year goal. Is, we already have pictures of them, we had a survey taken. Someone in my main street is so bad that the roots of the trees are sticking two inches out of the ground, and I keep waiting every day for somebody to fall and get hurt, and sue the town, and then the town will go and fix the sidewalk. But I like to see us fix those sidewalks long before someone retires. When I see a mother coming down the street with a child in a little car, and they have to go off the sidewalk into the grass, is a problem, and that's what's happening. So bicycles coming down, and the kids are swaying off because the roots are sticking up in some places, two, two and a half inches above the asphalt. Okay, so that's a budget area. So if the council says, example, we wanna invest fifty thousand bucks a year in rehabilitation sidewalks, or X dollars. That's how, you know, what, you know, you put that on the thing, it gets embedded in the budget, and, and you get a list from the DPW or whomever thinks the worst sidewalks are, and then you start a plan. So that's how you, you know, again, if the council wants to solve it, you're just gonna put up the money. And you can, and you can have a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, whatever you want, or maybe, maybe you wanna just do two sidewalks. I don't know, but you can do it if you, if you, if you wanna.
I think it's tough because when you start talking about those sidewalks, a lot of it is, you know, a, a long-term project to line the streets with trees and now they're having infrastructure issues because they're too big. So you don't repair the sidewalk and in three years, it's gonna be cracking through the foundation. So your alternative is, do you cut the tree down? Do you repair the sidewalk and fix it every couple of years?
I didn't say it was easy, I'm just saying, if you wanna talk about it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, it's an expensive proposition that's a lot more difficult than just, you know, putting.
Yeah, we ended up ripping out every tree in our main street and because of that, and planted ones that don't grow big.
They capped at fifteen feet or something.
Yeah, and they were like little leaf lindens or something that was, they'd only get this big and the roots were, because we had the exact same.
Dogwood along the whole main street. The trees are, the suckers just keep on growing.
They're into each other.
Yeah, right.
Anything else?
So, so fires, a fire building plan, business development and the related infrastructure needs. Create a plan with all approved projects, community engagement and how to measure it. Circulating goals to staff and boards and committees. Engage BSU on a different level, specifically to update their economic impact statement that they did. Permitting process, make it clearer, both on the residential customer service side and the commercial side with a goal of making all the process smoother. Create a metrics dashboard around such items, you know, for example, around potholes, issue resolution, number of voters at elections and so on. And then DNI, DNI, continued work on DNI.
Just a quick clarification.
And sidewalks.
On the metrics, that's a second goal, invest in the systems that generate the data.
This might not be a goal, but was there any interest in developing a code of conduct?
I would definitely, you know, put that as a goal, I put that at the top of my list, I think it's something that, you know, as, as we meet, you know, at the very beginning of a, of a council year with new councillors being elected, I think that the whole review process should be gone over, the code of conduct, the Robert's rules. Just the, the basic information that a councillor needs to function.
Just to show off.
Outside of just showing up, which is assumed. Just as a, a, a small side goal, because I know we just voted recently to approve funding to repair VR football field, and I just saw it in the paper recently. A plan to finance the repair of the track at VR. Is that something that's in the works or process yet?
I have not heard anything about the track, I know that there.
We can't have a track meet because that track isn't such a district.
I know the football field, money got voted, but I haven't heard anything. And, and in fairness, Tony may have, have had conversations with Kathy about that, but I haven't heard anything about that.
So in addition to the workshops here, what, was it two years ago, we had the finance workshop, so I hosted, two, three years ago? I hosted three, three serious workshops. We invited finance folks from Bridgewater, finance folks from Rainham, the finance folks from VR school district. And it was, it was literally a workshop. We talked, one, one session was only on revenue. And so Tony went over how he projects out revenue, like he tracks all the car ownership in Bridgewater, whether it's lease, whatever. And then the next session, we talked about expenses. And he talked about how collective bargaining and how he's projecting out, you know, costs and tying that back into revenue. And a third element was capital planning. And we asked the school department to bring, bring forward their capital plan, which they had revised since then. We had our plan. And that's the type of thing, we need to sit down periodically, maybe in a, in a, in a longer session and go through the capital plan. Because it's fine that Michael sets priorities, but we should be setting the priorities of the capital plan and looking at big things, whether it's gonna be a dog park or a high school track or something else.
Right, and I think it's just, it's fallen by the wayside and I don't think that discussion was had because now the football field is in a state of disrepair and I know we're funding just a repair job, not exactly a replacement, so.
Right, because the replacement was close to a million bucks.
Exactly right, so ultimately, just think again, you know, either, you know, that, it wasn't planned for that expense. Six, seven, eight years down the line, he was talking about lists of, you know, dates of equipment and what needs to be replaced in time.
And that meeting highlighted a lot of things.
Yeah.
Not only in the town side, but on the, on the school side because we learned the track, and it was, it was a little higher than, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars, I think, for that. We learned that they had earmarks or they had put in their plan nine million dollars for the middle school for repairs there. That the HVAC at the high school is gonna need a repair, it's gonna cost three million dollars. So you have to put all these things into a priority list and try to understand what you're gonna fund, how are you gonna fund it?
Shut the AC off.
So, I mean, I don't.
Well, I just think maybe if you do that again, I would, I would priority.
Is that the regional school or your?
So the regional school, so it's all regional school.
Even the K A?
K A, yeah, K A's twelve.
K A's twelve, okay.
We're responsible for the maintenance of buildings.
We own the building.
Oh, under the agreement originally started, okay.
Yeah, so on the high school, it'd be a shared expense on the football field, the track and the HVAC with the town Rainham. On the middle school, which we just bought, it came to an agreement to buy. If we need the nine million dollars, that covers plumbing, electrical, windows, doors, a bunch of other, other things. That would be on town Bridgewater.
And so you main, you don't maintain them, you all, you have the repair, you have the capital.
So district, district will need a repair, they'll submit the, like, if they're doing a new boiler or something like that.
Is there a threshold?
If it's, well, we would have to vote on money, like.
Well, it's not a five hundred dollar fix.
No, so.
It's like a capital embedded, okay.
I am serious, okay. But it is, again, since this high school's been built, this is the original track that goes back to the old high school. It's been in a state of disrepair for over a dozen years now. Unfortunately, the school can't have a, a track meet there, they have to go elsewhere. So it's just one of the priorities I'd like to see addressed or at least have a conversation, as you mentioned, bringing the capital. School committees or in the town, you know, finance committees together. And let's make a plan to get it done in the next year or two, if that's possible.
So one other thing that you talked about earlier, but you didn't come to consensus, do you think it would make sense for the council to have a couple workshops? As standalone meetings, without, you know, like on zoning or business development or whatever you wanna do? Because if you're gonna do that, you put it as a goal and then you pick the dates. That's up to you, but.
I think that definitely makes sense.
I think it's, if we're gonna come together as a council and make these things happen, the discussion needs to be had. And we don't have time during a regular council.
Cause you're the regular course. I know that, right? And they've done that, so.
So I think it's something that would be something to strive for. And I wouldn't say it, you know, every month, but maybe once every other month type of thing, that's six. You know, pick six topics, top, well, top five, top six.
One could be budget every year.
I mean, but anyway, but our top five goals, we take a meeting on each goal and review each goal.
The training piece was also interesting, maybe you all already know that, but taking the time out to go through how expenses work and those other things. Equity training for us, I mean, that could be interesting too. So I don't know if those are separate workshops.
Were you on, on, when a new councillor comes on, do you, do they go and meet all the department heads and get to know?
That's what we tried a couple of years ago, Naisha was kind of the leader of that effort. And she would have an evening where the new councillor, I think before the first meeting, would come in and sit down. Matt, I think you went through that, right? And so not only would a couple of representatives, representatives of the council, like I did, I, I think I, I did one with Matt, but also bring in a town clerk, town manager, maybe a couple of chiefs.
Finance guy.
Finance guy, you know, kind of understand what the, that, or, you know, a face-to-face meeting, you kind of understand what the role is and a couple of other elements like.
Because it takes so long to catch up.
Right.
You know, all the things, system.
There'll be something to set up again, because when I first came on, I didn't do that and since I've been back on every time, so. Now you're the lucky one.
Wait a minute, do you wanna do that?
Well, no, I, I met most of them, just, I'm saying for him, mostly for, for his point of view. But this actually, over the years, some people, I probably.
You can do that during the day.
He didn't even give us his tenth edition of the Robert's rules.
And did Ann get you one? Ann usually gets the Robert's rules for you.
I do have one now.
So what we did, what we did with Eric was definitely a butchered version, it's not even finished yet, but, you know, so you've met who the, the, you know, sort of senior leadership.
Introductions, yeah. But I was thinking you had more of like, more detailed stuff that would probably take me a year and a half to learn. There's a, there's a version.
And some of the important things, and we went through this in the early version of the council, like the first couple of years. We didn't really have an idea at that point because no one trained us on this. What is the difference between a resolution and an order? How does an ordinance differ from an order? When is it proper to do that, that particular thing? Now, the attorney always tells us that we can't do things with Michael, you know, the order of things. And, and, and so, you know, that structure, because you sit down and you have these things you wanna get done. And, and who is so helpful and putting together, you know.
It might be, I mean, I can almost imagine if we just, if you turn on the outside, I think, you would be, I know that too. But yeah, that'd certainly be helpful.
Just an idea. Going once?
Right?
Going once?
Thank you, that's the luck, we've got a great team here. It's nice to hear people use the word team instead of I, I, I.
True.
That's for sure. Yeah, yes, yes, and well, for, for, certainly on behalf of the council, you know, thank you for coming out tonight and helping us facilitate sort of a discussion, I think it's a good starting point. It might not be perfect and certainly we have a lot more work to do, but I think at least my hope in this meeting, as I said to Michael, was to start the process of this becoming the norm in order to have these types of conversations, particularly around goals and goal setting and how that incorporates, you know, to even the town manager's evaluation and how, how are we evaluating on something that we didn't fund? We just wanted it in there and really all knowing about what's going on, so. I guess with that, I would, I don't know, entertain a motion to close or you just close the meeting?
You can just close it.
Go ahead and close the meeting, it is eight fifty-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.